I do like the taste of it.
I like Tim Hortons.
You know, everybody talks about that. I don't know that I've ever had it.
Yeah.
But he's a Canadian anyway.
He is Canadian.
He's a Canuck.
He is a Canuck. Good coffee, though.
So what do you buy for coffee?
I buy Tim Hortons.
Tim Hortons.
I roast my hours.
No, it's Canadian. But you can buy it at Walmart. You probably get it at the same.
Used to be a-
I don't want any socialist coffee. I don't have any socialists.
They had them here in the States for a long time, but people didn't really recognize their coffee.
I did go to buy four.
Tim Hortons in Canada was like Starbucks here. They were everywhere.
Yeah, they still are.
Yes.
And I like Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, Kirsty always bought the French roast.
I like French roast.
I like French roast. Yeah.
It works.
But I'm a connoisseur because I'm a home roaster.
Oh, do you crush your own beans?
Yeah, I've done that probably twenty years.
Do you do your own bean thing?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, it only takes about ten minutes. And I've had coffee from every place on the planet. Every place. Wonderful. Yeah.
Is it electric or manual?
It's hot air. Yeah.
That's too much work.
Not really. Yeah, but that's why you're drinking, you know, Starbucks out of a can. Yeah. I remember him, too.
You did.
And it's like a stick and a half for like three.
There's Jim's piece.
No, I'm not eating.
I mean yours.
Okay.
Yeah, I got an EpiPen in the car here, good. And I know how to administer.
I wish I knew an EMT or something.
Stick him in the eye with that EpiPen. He'll see better than he ever did.
Do you know, I calculated, you know, they got this thing about the Trump administration blowing up the boats.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
I am too. But guess what? When you calculate, when you calculate the number of people that died from fentanyl overdose every year, and translate that into commercial flight, uh, flights.
Yeah.
Or plane flights. Do you know it's two a day we crash?
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
If you had two commercial flights crashing every day, everybody would go ballistic with it.
Oh, they go crazy.
Oh, they'd go nuts.
Yes. It's all a matter of perspective.
Methanol or not methanol. Outside, I don't know.
I was, when I was in Navy, I was on a United Airlines jet that caught on fire. The galley caught on fire. We landed Indianapolis here. From Chicago, yeah. That's when I learned to speak up. It was an old seven twenty-seven stretch and the, and the, the galley was in the center. And I'm coming home for the holidays, you know. And I noticed smoke come out of the kitchen. I didn't want to be stupid. I don't want to say anything. And I noticed flames start sparking. So when the flight attendant walked by, really, I said, ma'am. And, and she, yeah. I said, is that supposed to be doing that? And when she turned around and screamed and looked at us, I knew.
You were in Trump's post, we did. The scream.
That, that plane started filling up with smoke so fast. And they couldn't drop the officer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, poof.
And knock windows out and suck your ride on out.
Yes, and back then they had a flight engineers. There were three of them.
Okay.
And, and so he come back with an extinguisher, put it out. But the green, back then they served meals and the grease, they call them, we got a grease fire.
It was a kitchen fire.
Yeah, a kitchen fire and a stupid airplane. But it made me think. Made me think after that. There's nowhere to go, Jim. You just gotta sit there and look really stupid because you can't do nothing without a fire extinguisher. I'm glad they had one up front.
Yeah, way to thirty thousand feet, that'd be a gun.
But it was weird seeing all those fire trucks lined up along the runway, Indianapolis International Airport.
You ever watch those shows on the Channel about the plane crashes?
Yeah.
Those are, I like those shows. Those are interesting.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Mornings.
Is it in this building or outside?
Yeah. Oh, we're late. Late, we're late for a very important meeting.
Susan, we have no hand washing or restroom facilities in the building. We're trying to hold a public open meeting, but obviously humans have to use the restroom. Water cans be here for hours. We have to be here for hours. Should we abbreviate our meeting so that people can move?
Can I just pee outside?
Probably because of plumbing, I'm assuming.
What's that?
No bathroom, no water.
Oh, where you live?
Here.
Oh, here. Oh, here. For anybody?
That's all right, though. You told me.
Yeah, same here. Now, you're drinking coffee. What's up with that?
Can I borrow your coffee cup?
Somebody ought to, somebody ought to allocate funds to get that fixed.
It breaks like every Christmas. It's the same place, yeah.
That's right, we can start saying Merry Christmas.
Another Culver alum. What can I say?
Really?
There's nowhere to go there.
Library.
Oh, library.
We're gonna stop in about an hour.
Yes, I was. So was she.
Were you with the Culver military? No kidding. It's in Plymouth.
Did you go to Culver, Joel? Really? I wanted to go there as a kid. Lake Mexico.
Yeah.
Love Lake Mexico.
I was on the Sea Scouts. We'd go up there sailboating and all that.
I was in a community corrections facility.
Well.
Juvenile.
Well, our scout, our, our, our scout master should have been in one because typical scout master did his typical thing.
Oh, gross. Oh, come on. Oh, that's disgusting.
Lake Mexico.
Oh, that you can stop. Just take those people to shoot them back. Hey, Derek. Morning. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. We can say that. Thanksgiving. Or I guess you should say Happy Holidays or Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yep.
You happy holidays, man.
Okay, call meeting to order. You see the pledge of allegiance?
Happy Holidays.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with the important things. The bathrooms are closed. So, here's anything else. Gary's got a Gatorade bottle for you.
Yeah.
So we're going to take a twenty minute break midway and, uh, is the library or is the history center usually open or no?
I don't know.
Nobody knows about the history center. Whatever. Probably have to go to the library.
You can go to my house, but it's a five dollar surcharge.
A cleaning fee.
All right. Well, let's get out of here.
Sorry. Long day. Oh, sorry. So we got our first bill from our attorney and my legal fee line only has twenty-five hundred dollars in it. The election board needs an additional thirty-six hundred dollars to pay this first invoice. Colleen, what's this for? I'm sorry.
This is the attorney fees for counsel that we have to retain for the lawsuit that was brought against the election board.
Okay, I just wanted for clarification. I wasn't sure. Thank you.
We are, also, we are allowed to vote at the, this meeting. We set it up this way. And that's where we'll be for the twenty-six meetings. The executive committee, the work sessions will be voteable.
How much did we put in the legal line for next year's budget?
Forty-five.
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two grand.
Okay. Forty-two thousand?
Forty-two.
But, but I think we-
Somebody changed it.
But I thought we also put some into the sharing.
So I'm hoping this is the only time I have to come forward to ask for an additional appropriation to cover this.
Right. What's the hourly rate? I'm just curious.
Hourly rate, you know?
Uh, three fifty. Three fifty.
Okay. That is curious.
The new election board members are here pressing support. Good. Why don't you introduce yourselves as long as you're here. Stand up and let us know what your name is.
Kathy Shortbridge.
Kathy Shortbridge.
Lisa Hall's husband.
Yeah, we know who you are.
Lisa Hall's husband.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're the new members of the board and we need some help on defending this case. I'd be of highest quick response.
Okay.
But it takes a lawyer. We're both British, by the way, and we don't know how to handle it.
Takes a substantial amount of lawyer.
You know, litigious lawyers, meticulous lawyers.
We're friendly lawyers, yes.
Is this Lisa Hall's husband now?
Oh, good. Yes.
Okay. We've got Karen Kirby's husband over here.
There you go.
What's that got to do with anything?
Lisa Hall's husband. Come on.
How you guys are doing?
Normally she sits in the back and takes notes on all you guys, but-
That's why we had to clarify who you were.
That's right.
She wasn't here.
All right. Okay. So this is an ordinance, additional appropriation ordinance, twenty twenty-five, number twelve, dash zero, four, dash zero, 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 Council Bill eighteen. Whereas it has been determined that it is not necessary to appropriate more money than is appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one be resolved by the Brown County, by the County Council of Brown County, Indiana. For the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. General Fund one thousand, line thirty thousand, other services charges, thirty-six hundred dollars. Total is thirty-six hundred dollars. Any discussion on that?
Yeah. Jim, you said, I think I recall, what'd you say, forty-two thousand next year? That's more than normal, right? Or is that- I think what I did is I, I backed into it. In other words, you know, I, I don't know what I'll, I'd have to go get my calculator and calculate it. But, but I basically said, okay, let's say it takes X amount of months. You've got so many billable hours per month at X. That's how I came up with the forty-two K.
And I think we also put some money in our, our fund for-
Because, because like, because we get here to, if, to address, if you want me to try to-
I just wonder if, if we can get any of the money back.
Well, let's do this. How many hours? What's that total bill for?
Because that's kind of-
Thirty-six hundred.
General fund.
No, but it's six thousand ninety dollars, right?
Three, three thousand.
The total invoice is six-
She, um, total billable hours is seventeen point four zero.
Okay, so we get seventeen point four oh at three hundred and fifty bucks an hour, right? Yeah, so it's six thousand ninety dollars. So if I take, if I take forty-two K, right, divide that by three hundred and fifty bucks, that's a hundred and twenty hours is what we've got budgeted in there at three fifty an hour. So she's already used up seventeen and a half hours. So, let's see.
I guess my point is if we don't spend that, is out of the general fund, remind me at the forty-two for next year?
It just goes back into-
It just goes back to the general fund.
But I mean, yeah, we're gonna get that back, right?
I'll give it back to you, Scott. It's not like it can go on a cruise or anything with any of that.
So.
Merry Christmas to me.
Let's hope we can get some money back.
All right.
Any other discussion? Take a motion?
I'll motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Move to second. You wanna do your thing, Sandy?
Jim?
Uh, yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes, since we're in it, I guess we have to.
Scott?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Now, this is Northern, so that's two readings.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring a second meeting for reading of the ordinance requirement.
Read. Thank you. Title only sufficient this time?
We need a moment.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Need a second on that.
He just-
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Okay. Title only is question? Additional pro- re- reach ordinance twenty twenty-five, number twelve, dash zero, four, dash zero, 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 Council Bill number eighteen, for other services and charges to the clerk collection board.
We motion to approve Council Bill number eighteen. Eighteen, right?
What is this? Same thing.
We're doing a second.
Second. Second, anyone?
Uh, yeah, I'll second.
Great. Sandy?
Jim?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Anything you need?
Yes. Thank you very much. You all have a lovely day.
Merry Christmas.
Guys do a good job out there this time, okay?
At least I said hi.
Chris Kendall market this weekend.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Yeah, Melissa?
Yes.
Help the police.
Um, these requests are-
I can't talk to us.
Yes. Exactly. I came a month ago and then this is, so it's not changed. It's the same thing, but I'll go over it. Um, these are reflections of what Ready Financial, or Ready Financial found that Julia and I went over list by list. Um, these are to combine, to close some funds, to transfer, to make some funds in the positive, so then we can close them. So these are all, um, editing purposes for, um, accounts that have been just let to go in dormant state. So, um, the first one is Fund four fourteen, which is the health support clinic reimbursement fund. It has eight thousand one hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents in it. And recently, in this last year, you, as the councils, helped the health department reenact the forty sixteen Health Support Clinic Fund. This is where we had the HVAC systems and those items, um, taken out of to fix the support clinic. Um, we would like to take that money and put it in the active fund of four sixteen, so then we can close out the old fund of forty fourteen. And the second thing is there's city readiness money, eight oh two for sixty-two dollars, eight oh three for, uh, three thousand thirteen dollars and forty-six cents. Um, and the actual city readiness fund that we use currently is nine one one eight. So I would like to transfer those funds into the active fund and close the old funds out. Then, um, the next one is eighty, eighty-one oh six Public Health Coordinator, federal grant. There's two hundred and eighty-six dollars in it. And currently, the fund that we use is nine one one nine Public Health Coordinator. So we want to transfer that money into the Public Health Coordinator Fund and close that fund out. Then on Fund eleven fifty-nine, Health Department, we need an appropriation for twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, or twenty-three thousand twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
Nope, nope.
Nope, nope.
Sorry. Um, and move it to the immunization fund. And then we want to, they'll make that fund a zero balance because it's currently in the negative. And then we want to close that out. And then Fund eleven fifty-nine, Health Department appropriation of fifty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents to be moved to Fund nine one one four, Health based Fed Grant. And the reasoning for this is the money has been receiveded in the eleven fifty-nine fund, but it has been taken out of the nine fourteen fund for the last two years. So I need, that's got that fund um, in a negative balance of about seventy thousand. So there's twenty-five thousand dollars that's going into it this year that we got from the grant. And then I want to take this money and add to that money and zero that out. So we no longer have that and that correction is made. And then the last item is Fund balance eleven sixty in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixteen, sixty-two cents. Um, payroll of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for capital carryover from twenty-four to twenty-five. So what they have allowed us to do, HFI has allowed us to take funds that- So what they have allowed us to do, HFI has allowed us to take funds that we carried over from '24 to '25 and carry them over one more year to '26 because of the way that they reduced our funds. So we went from $334,000 to receiving $91,000 for next year. And that is going to pay for our payroll line that we have for the environmental specialist. So that is what we're gonna do, is instead of keeping that money, remember when we talked about using it for buying a date and doing all that stuff? Well, we didn't do anything with it. So we're, they're gonna allow us to allocate it, but I have to get you guys to vote it in today. And then I have to do a carryover sheet to the state of Indiana and put it on red cap and give the, and say that I have the okay funding. So, in order to make that happen. That's it.
Last one, you said it can be a carryover to cover salaries and...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Is any of that gonna remain just a carryover, or is it all gonna be...
No, it'll all be used.
Isn't that, Melissa, for those two folks who received...
That's for one of them.
One of the certifications.
They will also get an increase in pay this year because they have done all their certifications and everything that was required and has had their, which I put in your package when I asked for budgets, not with me currently, but they have everything that they need to do to roll out. So we do have one, that's a person that's in a plan to retire next year, so that will go down. So we will, in '27, we'll only have three. And so that's, that's the plan. These people are here to learn the jobs there. We will cross train them. They can not only do septic, but they can also do food. And now we're going to pull in the spa inspections, that starts in January. So they had to get all those certifications in order to be ready to roll out and training, on the job training.
Remind me, how much are the spa inspections? Is there a fee for that?
Yeah, it's, um, it varies amongst how many that they have, and I think it's like $200 for the one to four, and then it jumps again to six, and it goes up to a total of $1,200 for 14 and above. But that means that we have to go and inspect their sheets, we have to manage their water, we have to keep track of everything that they do monthly, because they have to do a monthly send-off for the state. It's quite a lengthy process, actually. I think I probably better go get my certification, because there's a lot more tools in spa than what we do, so.
Then Susan, I assume you either wrote this or reviewed it, or are you okay with what you're seeing here? When are we ready?
She didn't, I did not write this one. I didn't write this.
Have you had a chance to see it?
That's, that's the notice that was sitting in the paper. I mean, that's just, yeah, that's...
We reviewed it though, and we're good. Can we take a look at that?
Everything on the front page, it's all just housekeeping cleanup.
Yes.
That's where Jim and myself and Reedy got together. Actually, Jim got a bunch of stuff together with Reedy on all the cleanup that needs to be done with some of the funds.
Some of those funds had been there since like when I was there back in 2003.
Exactly.
Yeah, you're talking about the meeting with Caitlin Schaefer.
Yeah, with Caitlin.
And these were items that we were seeing when we were doing poll reports and going over everything Dr. Conway and I had been doing the year before. So this was not a surprise. Some of the things that they did suggest us to move were biohazard, we cannot touch those. Some federal grant monies, we, they just have to sit there. Now, hopefully, we never need to use them, but if we do need to use them, they're there, and you guys can just reenact them.
Wait, you go to that?
Yeah, I mean, so generally, right, these transfers from her grant funds, like, doesn't really require any more work from you all. The, the carryover is a carryover, doesn't require anything special from you guys. The 1159 fund, those two, like what, what Melissa said, was on, on the larger of those two, that was already budgeted for. So you'd already appropriated it.
You did.
Not additional appropriation that you're doing right now. And then the smaller of the two, was that already appropriated as well, or is that...
Yes.
So, I mean...
So they've been appropriated, but they were in earlier years, so they all have them into the cash now.
Oh.
That's why I'm asking for appropriations.
Oh, that, these weren't appropriated in your budget?
Not this year, no.
Okay.
Well, whatever.
Whatever.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Julie provided the notice. I don't know why Cindy, Amy, you sent me some stuff and not...
I sent it to you, I sent it. I've got two different addresses.
Okay, we need to fix that.
Yeah.
Because like the Perlita one, right, I got that notice from Cindy, and so I created the additional appropriation on this. So I, I mean, we can have the public hearing today on it, which is what this is, and then we can appropriate it on Monday night.
Okay.
I mean, is that fine with you?
Good, thank you.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yep.
Do we need to open a public hearing, or no? I mean, there's not, you said public hearing.
Right, I mean, that's technically what an additional appropriation is, that's why you give the notices, so... Yeah, you can, you can open it, you can ask if anybody else has anything to say.
We'll open the public hearing, I don't know.
We need a motion for that, or...
Nope, no motion, we'll need a motion to close it.
Anyone have anything to say?
We're supposed to have a public hearing, seen none.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You love it here on Monday, or...
I, you too.
Okay.
I know you'd like to be here, but...
All right, wonderful. Amy, when you get a chance, you should come over, give us a couple more weeks, but pay a visit. It's amazing. And what's truly amazing is I had an employee that could not put coffee for almost a year.
Oh, your Mulder mediation?
Yeah, and now that we have had this done, we just, all of us were talking yesterday that no one has had that coffee.
Noticeable improvement in that air quality.
Yeah, it's amazing, and it's beautiful, so...
Good.
It's always nice that people at the health department are healthy.
Yes.
People that are kind of...
That's pretty good.
So thank you.
These people are in really bad shape. Obesity rates out of the world.
Darren seconded.
Darren seconded, okay.
That's funny.
My voice vote.
All right, Jim?
Oh, yes, sure.
Joel?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Well, that's a motion to close the hearing. And then, so we need to advertise at our next meeting.
You've already advertised for today, you don't have to advertise anything else.
Today, we're notifying that we're going to make the...
Some Monday, at our next Monday meeting.
There'll be an additional appropriation ordinance, just like what you did for Prudential today.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got two more items on the second page of that hanging out. We'll get the community to request $200 from Fund 4103.
You need one of these, you got one?
That's okay.
Okay.
Sandy has hers right here, but I'm gonna leave over.
Okay. Request 327, 325. .0000 to Fund 4103.02716.0000. There you go. What I, do we...
What is it?
I don't know.
Jim, you know what this is?
No. Teresa's at a conference, so I'm understanding.
Is this a cell phone thing?
I mean, we table it.
Oh, the cell phone's the next one. Power. Table it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on a minute. Yes.
I mean, it, it looks like... Are you planning to do this with me? Right, your $325 is just a transfer within the same budget classification.
Right.
Like that... It doesn't even have to come in front of you, Julie can just do it in her office.
Right.
Right. The first thing, the $200, looks to be an additional, but I don't know what Fund 4103 is.
Everyone's a part of the rec fund, or...
No.
Yeah.
Hey, I have a question for you. The money that you wanted?
$200.
The $200?
Those boys down there, they're growing boys, they're hungry, they get nourishment.
Make your teeth green.
Yeah.
Don't say what it's for, that's...
Yeah, you got it, Julie.
I would hope so.
Actually, it's requested 325. 202716. Which I can do anyway, but they're wanting to know what, what you... Yes. Well, that's a good question, because I don't have my computer up here with me.
You know what? I gotta go get new ones. 3.0.
I thought you were gonna stack.
Yeah, small mighty.
I hesitate, I know what Parks and Rec's about, so... Technically, I, we don't really need them to do anything, it can still transfer some money, so it's not a big deal. I'll find, I'll fit, I'll send them a notice once I figure it out. Council, we're in Council meeting. Uh, it's not... I'll have to explain this later.
Okay, so, Parks and Rec?
This is move to Parks and Rec, need it be?
Yeah. My girl. Teresa?
All right.
Talk to her.
Talk to you later.
All right, so what?
Okay, so there's no...
Nothing to do on it?
No, there's nothing you have to do on it.
Okay.
What was the 200? I mean, was that an additional appropriation?
It's coming out of the one fund to go into the other fund, too.
So they're both, they're both going transfers? It's coming from 4103.
I'd actually have to go downstairs and do that, so let me just send it to you once I get it together.
These are actually line item transfers.
Yeah. That's all it is.
They're just line item transfers. We have nothing to do with that.
You don't have anything to do with it, it's just a courtesy that you know it.
It's coming from both of those going into that.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a lot of...
Parks and Rec, this is the Monopole Cell Tower poles issue. Funds transferred would be plus $30,333.34.
That's the money that actually got put into the general fund, because they were not aware that they didn't ask for a...
Well, it was originally set up, it was wrong, fund type.
Correct.
Fund to Fund 1320.06501.
That's number, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the new fund is number.
All right, can I, can I interject here real briefly? Yeah, first of all, I'm gonna clear, clear a couple of things up here. I am, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not bringing this up to try to cause problems. It may appear that way, but it's actually not the case. The reason I'm bringing it up is that last month's special session, I handed every one of you an email from Lori Rogers. Okay? And the email had in it the, based on State Board of Accounts, the process, the statutory process. And, and so all I'm doing is, you know, trying to be the compliance manager, if you will, right? To make sure that we're in compliance with the State Board of Accounts and state statute. And the reason I'm kind of focused on that, made it a priority, is because of the State Board of Accounts' recent audit, and then the two, you know, our credit rating dropped from a double A minus down to a single A. And to me, you know, I kind of take issue with that. And part of the reason for that credit rating drop is these, these State Board of Accounts derogatory reports that they, audits that they do. And so I reached out to Lori Rogers, because, you know, you've got meeting minutes, we have ordinances, and we have resolutions. And Susan, you can, you know, if I say anything out of line, you can correct me. Uh, I don't believe a meeting minutes should supersede an ordinance and/or a resolution. And based off my limited knowledge, a resolution is really applicable for administrative type requests. So additional appropriations, a resolution would be required. Correct?
You could do additions by resolution, yes.
Yeah, okay. However, you know, this, this money in the general fund is to the tune of, I think, a little over 30 grand. And the county's been receiving $1,000 a month from this Monopole company that the commissioners approved, which, you know, made sense. So that would, to me, indicate that the decision to get into the lease agreement with the cell tower company was actually 30 months plus back, right? And the correct way to manage something like this is when the commissioners, the previous administration, made the decision to have that cell tower installed on Parks and Rec. And in addition to that, when they made the decision, where I understand it, is that then the Parks and Rec would have complete unilateral discretionary authority to spend the $12,000 a year, however they deem necessary. But what I understand it, based on Lori Rogers, is that at that time, the commissioners should have created an ordinance, and in that ordinance, they then instructed the auditor to establish a non-reverting 4,000 Home Rule Fund. And then at the same time, in that same ordinance, put the language in the ordinance that spoke specifically that Parks and Rec would have 100% discretionary authority to spend the money. They would have then passed that, had it recorded, and then I, I don't know how this works, but I'm assuming once that ordinance would have been recorded, then that would have been cross-referenced with that fund number. So that 10 years down the road, if there's any disagreement on who can do what with what, they can always revert back to the ordinance, pull it, and it clearly just explains why it was established, when it was established, how the money can be used. So that, that step in the process was overlooked. And so instead, what happened is that there wasn't a fund, and so then the auditor's office had been receiving $1,000 a month checks for 30-plus months, and they're just taking those checks and they're dumping it into the general fund. And then 30 months later, the Parks and Rec director comes back to the council and says, hey, by the way, you know, you all need to pass a resolution doing appropriation out of the general fund into this fund. And so I don't have a problem with doing the resolution and moving the money, or the challenge comes in, as far as I'm concerned, we are not in compliance with state statutes and Secretary of, or the, the Indiana State Board of Accounts, because one of the areas that I'm kind of hung up on, and I've done an AI search, don't know whether it's accurate or not, but, you know, earlier this year, you know, we all got a questionnaire from the State Board of Accounts on fraud. So the question I ask AI is, does an auditor, a county auditor in state of Indiana, have the unilateral discretionary authority to just create a fund out of the blue on their own? And to date, you know, the answer to that question is no. Now, I don't have anything to support that, other than the AI search. But when I think about that, I think, well, that makes sense, because if an auditor had the complete discretionary authority to just arbitrarily create a fund, that could open up Pandora's doorbox for fraud.
Can, can, hold on a second. You're saying an auditor created a fund in our...
Well, my question is, is does an Indiana county auditor have, per state statute, per state statute, have the unilateral discretionary authority on their own, without anything from, no public hearing note, to create a fund and just go into the system, create a fund?
No. No.
And I'm just asking this, I'm throwing this out... And I'm just asking this, I'm throwing this out because it's, you know, for example, you know, I just had to complete twenty-four hours with a CE credits, all right? And one of the courses I had to take was anti-money laundering. Okay, and the other one was ethics. So I'm over here studying anti-money laundering, and at the same time, I'm going, you know, you know, can I create a fund and then create maybe two or three funds?
So Jim, I mean, the answer is no, obviously, and then I don't think that's what happened here.
Well, there's.
So what are we?
Well, no, I don't think a fund's been created. It's just been going in the general fund, right?
No, there was a fund created. They they told us they needed a fund to put this money in. Now, without a state telling us what fund to put it in, the fund gets created. What they didn't tell us what it had, it needed to be a non-appropriate, you know.
Non-reverting.
Non-reverting thing. Yeah, what they didn't tell us was that. So then the fund got created. It was not a non-reverting fund. So when the money, so each year when the money went in, at the end of the year, it automatically goes back to the general fund.
So you talked to the SBOA and said, what do we do with this money? They said, create a fund, or is how that work?
No, we, that worked from Parks and Recs telling us they got this money, this needs going to a fund. This is how that works.
But who gave the auditor's office the instruction to create the fund?
I just said that.
Parks and Rec.
Okay.
They send the they send the information to us and then we do it.
Right, but I.
You're saying that may not be kosher.
No, it 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 a fund, you know, based on the email that I received from Lori Rogers, is to be recreated by an ordinance. Because you have to have, you know, public hearings, and it needs to be in public that this decision is being made to create a fund.
We always had, we always had to come before council to ask for a new fund.
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm not thinking that.
I'm just taking, I'm just talking, I'm what I'm bringing up is this issue of creating a fund. Right, and to create a fund in this specific, let me give an example. This, and the reason I this issue is this is the second time this issue's come up. Because the other issue was the sock factory money. Okay? Because that that was not, you know, is not in compliance with at all. So it 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 and so now, all of a sudden, we find ourselves again basically in a similar situation is the sock factory money. You know, and you know, and just to restate what I've already restated, is that the commissioners, because the commissioners, the previous administration, the commissioners are the one that negotiated the contract with the cell phone company. The commissioners at that time should have created an ordinance. Right? And in that ordinance, then they were instructed, per the ordinance, the auditor's office to create the four thousand series fund. And in addition to that, that ordinance would have had specific language on it on what the money can be used for and what it cannot be used for.
And they would have come before us.
No, we wouldn't have anything to do with that. No, we wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Just like, yeah.
Just like, yeah.
Council would have created the fund, the non-reverting fund.
Huh?
The council would have created a non-reverting fund.
Well, according to Lori Rogers, and I've got the email here, I can, we can read the email if you want. And it, you know, I mean, I had, I'm just going by what Lori Rogers.
Your understanding of protocol would be what?
Would have been, I I think we need to have state board of accounts come in here and we need to start asking them point blank questions.
That's a wonderful, that's a wonderful, that's a, I do, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Your understanding of protocol is present is.
Because if they're going to hold us accountable. We want, exactly.
Created a non-reverting fund. It was in that ordinance, creating a non-reverting fund. You would have stated whether it needs appropriation from council or not. So it could be that even if they have this money in the fund, they still have to come to council to appropriate the money. Or it could be that they could spend without appropriation from county council. And then included in that ordinance would also be, here are the uses for this fund. Here's the things we're going to spend the money on.
But that was not done, you understand?
Stock factory money.
Now, you're saying the commissioners would have no margin in that specifically, even though they wrote the contract?
Right.
They just write the contract, we create where the money goes.
Right.
I would like to enter into the record this email from Lori Rogers. So I'm going to read this email, if you don't mind, just so I can go on record. Uh, the email was from Lori Rogers. It was dated ten twenty-one twenty-five at twelve oh four. Ricky Hoffa was CC'd along with Stacy Burns. The subject matter is creating new funds. The state board of accounts is frequently asked if the county can establish a new fund for a particular purpose or function. Indiana Code thirty-six one dash three is entitled Home Rule. Indiana Code thirty-six one three dash two states, the policy of the state is to grant units all the powers that they need for the effective operation of government as to local affairs. Other sections of the statute restate this premise in various terms. IC thirty-six one three, six states in part A, if there is a constitutional or statutory provision requiring a specific manner for exercising a power, a unit wanting to exercise the power must do so in this manner. Section B, if there is no constitutional or statutory provision requiring a specific manner for exercising a power, a unit wanting to exercise the power must either, one, if the unit is a county or municipality, adopt an ordinance prescribing a specific manner for exercising the power. If the unit is a township, adopt a resolution prescribing a specific manner for exercising the power. Or three, comply with statutory provision permitting a specific manner for exercising the powder. Power. C, an ordinance under subsection B one must be adopted as follows, in a municipality by the legislative body of the municipality. In a county, subject to IC code thirty-six dash two, dash three point five, or IC code thirty-six three one, by the legislative body of the county. Number three, in any other county, by the executive of the county. Our position is the powers granted by various statutes authorize the board of county commissioners to create by ordinance as many funds as necessary to operate their particular county. However, an ordinance may not be used in attempt to circumvent statutory provisions, including the provisions of IC thirty-six dash two, dash five, dash two, requiring appropriations by the county fiscal body prior to dispersments of monies. The enabling ordinance should provide various types of information. Number one, the ordinance should clearly indicate the type or types of revenue that is to go into the new fund. Number two, the ordinance should list the purpose or purposes for which expenditures can be made for the new fund. Number three, the ordinance should establish the life of the new fund and indicate if the fund balance is non-reverting at year end or perpetual until terminated, either by the terms of the current ordinance or if another subsequent ordinance must be enacted. Number four, the ordinance should provide guidance as to the disposition of the fund balances on termination of the fund. And the ordinance should include any other terms or conditions the attorney representing the county deems necessary. An ordinance is not necessary when a fund is created by statute, unless the statute states an ordinance is required. The state board of accounts prescribes the use of fund accounting to provide accountability for government activities and financial status. This means the individual funds are used to segregate financial activity based on sources and uses. Permanent transfer of money from one fund to another clouds the transparency provided by fund accounting and should be infrequent, such as when specific authorized by statute, instead of transferring money from one fund to another, the appropriation should be transferred to the fund that has available money. This way, the use of the money in a fund remains transparent. I hope this helps. If you need more, let us know. Lori Rogers. There you go. That's why I'm bringing this up. And that was handed all out to you at the last special session.
The board of council will also tell you, contact your attorney and see what they say. They're not going to do legal.
There's like millions of IC codes on this particular subject.
Yeah.
Millions of kind of right here.
We've never been written up for the council creating a non-reverting fund specifying uses, specifying whether it requires appropriation or not.
So how do we want to move forward?
Like, we've, I've not been written up for that either.
All I think comes to mind is that lady in Illinois got off fifty-seven million.
I guess I think that it never hurts for the commissioners to or for them to state how it should be spent, you know, you know, with Parks and Rec. Can you spend it on anything that you want to spend it on? You know, I think, this is just me personally, that, you know, maybe there needs to be some sort of guidelines set up by the commissioner on how that money could be spent effectively. Not that Parks and Rec wouldn't, but you never know. That's my thought on the whole thing. I think that's a good idea. Us having an ordinance or a resolution that we're doing what we're doing isn't going to hurt.
So, I mean, the sock factory is a bigger issue, and that's a big mess that's dragged on for years.
Right, because it wasn't done properly. Right, and to me, this is real simple. It's just you draft the ordinance, commissioners pass it, and the key. Well, the key piece to the ordinance to me is what what I'm really trying to solve for. You know, next year's an election year, counts, we could have four brand new people on it. You may have a new commissioner. People are going to change, and seven or eight, nine years down the road, they get into chaos about, well, what are you spending that money on? And you get, and and this would alleviate any confusion in the future by future administrations on what this this revenue from the from the cell tower company, and how, what they can spend it on and what they can't. So I, you know.
Because here's the ordinance that spells it out.
Yeah, and it's recorded, and then like Julie, because this is, this is an educational question on my end. If there's an ordinance passed that create, and you could create a four thousand series fund, and then the ordinance gets recorded, is there anything in the system that, you know, somebody comes in, a new commissioner or council member, six years down the road, says, what's this fund for? And you go, well, here, this is fun. And then you can go to the recorder's office and cross-reference the fund with the recorder, so the recorder can immediately pull that document out?
Yeah, there is.
Is there?
There is, especially if they recorded the minutes, then it's document number twenty twenty-four, blah, blah, blah. Then they can go in there and they can.
Well, but I don't have to go through the minutes. I just, so, okay, this is fund number blah.
And they could also look it up.
If they, if you go and find the first ordinance, anything that would come in afterwards would be referenced with that.
If you go to the fund in the system and say, this is the ordinance, the date, and you go to the recorder and say, hey, pull this ordinance, it's such and such a date. So you're not trying to, you know, have to do an enormous amount of research trying to figure, you know, whereas minutes, you'd have to go back through, you know. That would take forever.
Go back.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, so first approach is the parks comes to you, you create a fund, and it goes like that, right? Do we want to change that?
That wasn't just Parks and Rec that did that. That was also commissioners. Not these commissioners.
Just do something.
The other commissioners, because they were the ones who actually approved Parks and Recs getting it.
Because of the contract they entered into.
All of it.
So they then worked with you to set up the fund to manage the monies.
No, we said, they just tell us to set one up.
They told you to, nothing or more ordinance.
They tell Parks and Rec to get us to set to set.
There's no ordinance or anything like that. Commissioners weren't headed. Is it a minute somewhere?
You want.
It's in a minute somewhere.
Yeah, it'd be in the minutes.
So what?
Anything that was said or done would be in the minutes.
Do we need or want to change that approach? And let's, I'd say, look at the stock.
I mean, if that.
Is that in mind?
If that's going to keep from, I mean, I'm all with that because if it's going to keep.
This is no big issue, but the sock factory became a big issue, so that's.
Yeah, it's been a long, it's a huge.
It would prevent more issues like this.
Yeah, it's just, right. It's just, because it's really, to me, this is really simple, or, you know, because here commissioners.
Would there have been any way that the commissioners would have known it was supposed to be a non-reverting fund? Two, I mean, if they didn't have paperwork, which Parks and Rec has all the paperwork, everyone wants to fill it out.
So maybe an assumption is.
Yeah, right. And and to me, this issue is just, is we have an opportunity here, right? To say, okay, what can we learn from this? Because this right here really then gets into a bigger issue of the lack of internal controls. And if you look at what's been written up, the SBOA, it is, it's a never-ending, ongoing internal control. Well, it's an opportunity to learn, and it's pretty simple. Commissioners draft the ordinance, they pass it, we have nothing to do with it. Ba da bing, that's done, it's recorded. We then pass the resolution, doing the appropriation over, and then it's over. It's done.
So it's unreasonable, Susan?
And the only thing I would ask the county is that as we go forward, you know, how do we implement internal controls so that next time something like this comes up, you know, here's step one, step two, step three, that we have a policy on it, that this is what is required to be done? Because it's not, this is not.
All for writing a lot more policies.
Yeah, I am as well, yeah, but that's, 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 I can say that.
It would fall, unfortunately, it will fall back on the auditor to say, we have a policy, here's the policy that you need to follow, and then the sheet set up.
Can you write up something? Goes along with this?
Well, but I, to me, that is the commissioners, the council, and the auditor, and all three of them, and need to be agreement on the policy. And that just, and then you have to, and then the biggest issue is, you can do, we can do policies.
And then if you get the state board, you know, some of that stuff comes in, they tell you what fund to create.
Well, that's okay. They tell you what fund.
Yeah, because that's my statute.
Yeah, exactly. Not negotiable. Those are going to be done like they say.
Right, and and not to change the subject, but just, you know, so everybody, you know, it's in my, it's in the back of my head. You know, we passed the budget, and the general fund is only in the black by a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So, so, you know, we have a budget surplus for twenty-six of a hundred and seventy-six K for the general fund. However, the commissioners, we're going to have to do another appropriation to reappropriate the hundred and thirty grand that we took out of the budget for the HSA account. So that's going to drop it down to forty-six K, right? And going forward, the big thing, the only reason we've got a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in surplus for the general fund for twenty twenty-six, is that we, as a council, moved all the line items out of the general fund for Parks and Rec into the CDC budget. Now, what I don't know is what's going to happen with the state board of accounts.
I just got a message, because Mary Smith is listening in, and this is what I said, what I said, because things are documented by twenty twenty-four document numbers in the recorder's office, being your former recorder. She said, uh, software does not have a place to record funds. We only index by name and ordinance number. Okay, so, okay, wherever the original document ends up, auditor's office might, most likely, would need to keep track of what hand, what ordinance handles what fund. Thanks.
Okay, that clears that up.
She said, she apologizes, they're five minutes behind.
Said that when we put it into the book, where all the ordinances are, we write what ordinance it is, and then we'll write what reference number.
So then you can go over there and get the reference.
Yep.
Got it, okay. So you can cross-reference very quickly, pull the ordinance, boom, settle it.
So you're going to write a policy on that, Julie, and you're going to bring it to our next work session, and we'll discuss it briefly and say that's a policy.
Discuss anything briefly.
We don't discuss anything briefly. Hey, at least we're discussing.
We don't discuss anything briefly.
You're getting the picture, right?
Yeah, again, I apologize. I'm just trying, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just.
You know, you can't help yourself.
Yeah, okay.
We're good. We're good.
That was very helpful.
All right, so, so this I know, we're just going to have to deal with this way and then take it from the future. So do we have to, ordinance to transfer it?
It would be an additional appropriation ordinance.
I think the ordinance is fine, because it just handles the additional appropriation.
Yeah.
An issue is, is, you know, I mean, the council can do an additional appropriation right now and get it over with.
But we have an advertisement yet.
Oh, haven't we? Oh, okay.
Yes, we have. That's the advertisement.
I mean, this is for public hearing, but like, I don't have an additional appropriation ordinance to to give to you.
That's what you're saying.
Oh, I thought this was.
No, that's the notice. You have one of those too, notice to taxpayers. I don't even know where those came from.
That's for the health department.
You know, turn it over.
Start the second page.
It would have to occur at your Monday night meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
So you just have to write it up. Has been added, anything to add to it?
Pop to it. Right.
Are you done yet?
Yeah.
All right, so that one's still Monday night.
Another meeting this Monday.
Uh-uh, the next Monday.
Next Monday.
Do we have still on this opioid money to jail service coordinator is that the subject of interest here? And what is the status of that? And what is the status of that? Do we need to act on that?
Well, they're going to use that for.
To shore up that.
I understand. It's not, sorry. So.
That may fall under the RIN situation. It does.
So we turn it off into that?
Do they need an ordinance to move that opioid money to do that A-line thing?
You don't need ordinance for the opioid money. You need to vote on it.
It would be appropriation, now, wouldn't it, out of the opioid to A-line?
It depends on what ordinances that establish the fund.
So do we need to have that placed by Monday night?
Okay, because what we're talking about here is just simply, Julie, is there enough opioid money to cover her salary for next year?
Just for a year.
But it helps the general fund.
It does.
Yeah.
For the year.
But the opioid money is decreasing every year.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we got enough to cover her for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
It is.
Yeah, so that needs to be done.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, we need to.
It's like the tribal money. We have 100 grand in there, but then we can use it on anything.
But when tribal money.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's another form of ARPA funds. We have 50,000.
So we could use that for matching for grants.
Can we have 100 grand in that fund?
We can isolate that for grant matching?
Yeah, we could, I think. Could we actually, I mean, you can use them on anything.
Any lawful purpose.
Yep.
I would be in favor of isolating it, protecting it for somebody.
Kind of what I've been doing is protecting it.
Well, spending it someplace else.
So we need to vote Susan for the opioid money to be applied to jail service?
Not right now.
Oh, so what do we need to do on that?
So, I mean, it's really just going to be the question. We've got to find how you establish your fund, see if there needs to be an appropriation out of it, or if it can be spent by technically commissioners without appropriation. So, I mean, I don't know how to answer your question right now, because I don't know how your fund is set up.
Okay, so how do we move it forward?
We'll set up for, like, the restricted fund, yeah, the fund that's restricted. We have the fund that's restricted, and we have the one that's non-restricted.
I'll get with.
How many funds do you have?
How that was set up.
I have all kinds of funds. Let me see.
An appropriation.
That's funny.
$4.87.
Oxycontin.
Yeah, back to a few years ago.
Yeah, it was oxycontin.
So I guess that would run out.
Yeah, decrease.
Can you guys take care of that by Monday, then, the Monday meeting?
That's not an appropriation for 2025.
It'll be January.
It's not an appropriation for January.
All right, so we go into January. Council Bill 14, the WIS designation, you know, we've status of that is sort of there, but we need to do something.
Well, so, sorry, because we're, yeah, okay. You know, when Kent Irwin and Lori Sealan are here and gave their presentation at the beginning of October, they said the next step of the process was to adopt the process. And that's what Council Bill 14 is. It's adopting the process. So, right?
Yes.
The letter changes right now. Thank you.
So it's not documenting the, it's not a mandatory implementation?
Right.
It's documenting the process.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got the process provided in our hands. We possess the process and all that.
Oh, that's the stuff that you got.
But I mean, the how you.
I don't think I can process this.
It's the factory.
They're supposed to take money and pass it on to the campus.
Yeah. Is he holding stuff up there, Orbis?
Not to cause a problem again.
Oh, sure.
And then, can we refer to this using Wagner Irwin's ULE's language? Which, because I think this is important. They refer to this as the factory evaluation system. And what I don't know, but I believe to be true, is this factory evaluation system is a system that's got an enormous amount of precedence throughout the entire country. And when we adopt this factory evaluation system, you know, we don't, because there's adopting it and saying, okay, here's our new approach going forward. And then there's the actual implementation of the factory evaluation system, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if, in our language, because I think language is important, this is the factor evaluation system.
Right, based upon their expertise and all of those.
FES is the way I understand it. No, it's not us. It's, it's, yeah, because I think. Susan, I know that you got, you know, because we're getting into, you know, I don't know if it'd be a Department of Labor. I mean, you're getting into a department. I don't know if it'd be a Department of Labor or what federal department you're getting into. But this factory evaluation system is a very objective, fair-minded, takes subjective biases out of the system, because you're scoring the position, not the person.
Right, based upon risks and their job requirements.
Yeah, which takes an enormous amount of liability off of the county and it puts it over onto the system. Yeah, okay, that's the way I thought.
You didn't hint that pile off.
Sorry.
Well, I just keep it in order.
We don't have that expertise.
No, I have no idea. I don't have a clue. Sorry, I know you were just dying to get this.
I was.
Oh, multiple pieces of that. Staple? It's staples.
I don't know if they've all made it for us.
Oh, the second one's coming.
You're not going to leave this first one, are you? Oh, yeah.
There's three.
Oh, three's coming, sorry. There's three.
We have three, I guess.
Yes. Oh, and here's an extra. One was stuck to the staple. That one's stuck.
Internal base, is it a different percentage again?
She's going to explain that.
Okay.
She and Ben.
The factory evaluation system will be sexy.
Can I take these home?
Sure.
And I put a black circle there and use them for targets.
Well, and they're also good for getting parts.
If you would like to approve the process at your Monday night meeting, that this is how moving forward you're going to evaluate positions, we can do that. Just because we're not implementing it yet doesn't mean that it's not the process that's going to be.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of that.
Me too.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Monday night.
It's reasonable. Yeah, because we didn't spend the 50 grand to do this just for, you know, willy-nilly.
Yeah, we want to do that Monday night, not tonight.
I'm not coming in here next Monday.
No, it's a week.
It's a week from Monday. He keeps saying.
Why not now?
I ain't going to be here. I don't know.
Why not now, Susan?
You can. I mean, you guys.
If you can, that's correct.
Why wouldn't we just do it now?
I will. I'll make the motion that we approve the factory evaluation system presented by WIS that gives them the process, gives them, gives us their process on going forward with rating jobs and that type of thing.
We'll put an effective date on that. Is that 4/26 or starting 27?
It's January 1. Want to be cleaner if we just did January 1?
January 1 of 2026.
That's right.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
We like it.
And I'm just going to add that that takes the burden off of us as council, trying to say, oh, this position and that position, rate, this position's going to rate higher because of this. We don't know those factors, but there are factors out there that are being weighted and used to rate those positions differently. And it takes the burden off of that.
Well, to me, what it does, in addition to that, would be it reduces our liability. Right. Well, it does more than that. I mean, it takes, it uses expertise of a group of people who do this for a living and know what they're doing, instead of us trying to just throw something together.
It also takes the department head or an employee of calling up Lori, which they will be forbidden to do, and say, make my salary $10,000 higher. Put in there whatever you want, but, you know, because we know that those types of things have happened.
And we establish a system that is fair.
Did somebody from doing something?
I think she's, I think she, I think she's not going to talk to them, is what she has told us in our meeting. If they call, she's going to, from what she told me, she's going to not talk to them.
And that's, and that's, I mean, and that's based on we, as council, having the authority to talk to her, and the payment for them is coming from council budget. So we're not going to allow anybody just to call up and run a bill.
Change their job description because they want to, they want more money. She reiterated that she wants to talk to them.
Second.
Who we're talking about?
Second.
WIS, the.
Just to clarify, that is instituting this starting January 1 of 26.
Yep.
Yes, we are taking this.
Joel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Just let her be.
That was easy.
We should also celebrate this as a first.
Okay.
Go for it, Harry.
We have a change.
And I want to, I want to say thank you for putting up with us for the extra time the other day and listening to our thoughts and taking this in and out and all that. Thank you.
We bored the poor guy to death.
He loves this stuff, though. He dreams of this stuff. I mean, he gets me to the.
Well, we weren't always.
Yeah, those are cold light bears.
Hey, Scott, hang on a minute. He doesn't do anything. Reagan has to do it all.
Oh, man.
It's poor Reagan's one.
Yeah, Craig and Reagan on this. First of all, I apologize for how small this is. It's a lot of information. The staple portion, obviously, we're not going to go through line by line. I just want to let you guys know how we came up with, you know, our increases and our assumptions for this analysis. So initially, we were asked to do a comparison to the internal base and the external midpoint. Now, during our meeting on Tuesday, we didn't even get into the external midpoint. It's a rather large increase, so we don't have that currently today. I can send it to you guys. You'll see the numbers for 26 and 27 for the internal base. But just really quickly, on the staple portion, what we ended up doing, the green highlight all the way down towards the middle of the page, that's the adopted budget. And we compared that. We used Jim's spreadsheet, so once again, I can't get any credit for you on the right side or the left side.
It's more blame in that case. The credit is Jim.
But.
Do you like me?
Well, currently in the adopted budget, so any comparisons, any increases to that based off, you know, the adopted. So we took the internal base amounts from the WIS study, and then we had to add back in longevity after that. And what you'll see in the first set of the blue, internal base plus longevity and the variance from adopted. So clearly, that's just if there's any comparisons, whether or not it was the same or an increase or a decrease. But then we had a discussion on Tuesday where if anybody was over the internal base, we weren't going to decrease their salaries. So then that's what the next, the middle blue there, the higher of the internal base were current. So anybody that was already above it, they're staying there. And then we brought up anybody that was below the internal base. So we had to do another column there. And this is broken out in the first few pages are the general fund and then the other column. And then for 2027, we ended up doing a variance there also. We discussed doing a 3% increase, but if an employee is already over internal base, they don't get a 3% increase. And so people that are at the internal base, that 3% catches up with, you know, those employees. That's how we ended up doing 2027. Say that one more time. So. How does the 27 part, how you calculate that? So hypothetically, you have an employee that's 40 grand and 50 grand, the internal base is 45. You're bringing that employee up to 45. They get a 3% increase. But that 3% increase still doesn't reach the 50 grand. So they're still not, they don't, the other employee that's above it doesn't get that increase until that internal base would reach.
Because otherwise, you're just, you're just putting that person out.
Yeah, you're moving everybody up the same. So what we've got is a line that we're trying to get to right now. People are at, who are at that line, at the internal base, they do not go up until everybody else catches up to them, and then everybody goes up.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
Because I like to think of it as you're truing it up.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Getting everybody in a fair position.
And saying, all right.
And you need to accelerate those real low people. You can accelerate them. I mean, you're doing that to all the people below.
And we may be able to, we may be able to analyze it and see what we can do about that.
Well, Susan has kind of worked on that. That's going to be her portion.
Yeah, thank you. Keep going. So that's how we came up with the numbers that then you see on the two summary sheets. They're very identical, the top left corner, in case you got mixed up. We'll start with the 2026 funding projections. And I can walk through some of the other adjustments. So we have the 2026 adopted budget column that carries over. And then we had a meeting, it wasn't Tuesday, it was 10 days ago. There were some commissioner adjustments that they wanted back into the budget that were cut. And I went ahead and listed those down below in the box on the left. This was just the increase. So these were, were cut during the budget process. I know what HSA County shared with, went on when that was discussed. But you can see that $262,315 matches up down here in that box. And then there was also the vaccine where it was cut, and it was $200, but that was in economic development. So we have added those back in to do this analysis to get to a revised budget, which is the last column there. And then this middle green section is where we have it linked up to that staple sheet for the general fund. So we pulled that for the general fund. We went ahead and added a couple of columns for FICA and PERC, which I gave percentages there because, go ahead. Well, Jerry, real quick, I saw on the FICA, like, on the, on the total 2025 compensation, for example, you show FICA as compensation, if I'm reading that right. It just seems. We don't, we don't, that's, that's just, we just left that on there. Jim just wanted to include everything there. Gotcha. We don't include FICA and PERC in our, like, that adopted compensation. Gotcha. Thank you. So we went ahead, included PERC and FICA as well and carried that over. You can see, then, you know, this is similar to the format you guys, you know, saw during the 2026 budget. We have projected revenues, and we have projected unused, which the only thing that changed there is we did put an unused appropriation amount in general. And if you look on the bottom box to the right, the EMA administrator, you guys have decided not to fill that. Well, that budget's still in there, so we know that's not going to be spent. And then the appropriation department, their entire salary was in the adopted budget, but a portion of that is being paid from somewhere else. So we know, like, those won't be spent. That's all that we use for unused appropriations. We're assuming, you know, 100% outside of that to, you know, be considered, just like we were during the budget process. That gets us to a projected surplus slash deficit, which is a deficit of a little over 123,000 just for the general fund. And you can, you know, work your way this way down. Another thing that is a little concerning, you know, in your. Jerry, sorry. If you back up, you're, when you say the, you talk about the general fund, 123,000, that's based on an increase to the internal base in salary, like, please explain this to me. Yeah, this is not. So we had, we had a surplus. Yeah, that is not, so we, we had, we had a surplus during the last, you know, budget adoption, that amount. What really contributes to that is we have these commissioner budgets updates in there. So that's 262,000 that was added prior. I know that Jim referenced that we were in the black by like 170 some thousand. Well, we add back in the commissioners and then we add also in a little over 105,000. So the internal base calculation, the green, is the 105,000, actually FICA, factor in FICA and PERF. Now, our study only looked at salaries and salary increases. So a combination of commissioner budget updates and this salary study factors is why we're now seeing, you know, the deficit of 123,000.
And that's a, the salary piece is a hypothetical, right? It's a, it's an example that we haven't actually implemented that increase.
Correct. Yeah, this is just the, looking at this with internal base.
Let's back up here a minute. And just for clarification, Siggs, the November 17th report that I have from Reedy Financial, because the 2026 budget was approved and the form four was submitted November the 4th for the deadline, 7022 is already being signed off. So as far as the 2026 budget is concerned, that was voted on, approved. But now I have a report here showing that 2026 commissioner budget adjustments per Brown County meeting on 11/24. So on the internal base, WIS, December 4th report right here, this one?
Correct.
On the left-hand side, the bottom. Explain this to me, what am I looking at here?
Those line items, those are line items that, that were cut.
I know, I saw it. And it's all, right.
So we had that meeting, they were requesting them back. So we are simply, obviously, that would have to be something that then the council will have to additional approve. We are just showing hypothetically.
Hypothetical, thank you.
If that is approved.
So to enact any of these changes is going to require additional appropriation. Thank you, that's all I needed.
But this is a total comprehensive view of the entire thing.
There were some things cut in there that were like, did we approve that to be cut? You know, was it, you know, those kinds of things, so.
Yeah, and while we're on that subject, let's address this here real quick. There were, because on Reedy's notes, you know, over here, and I'll just, you know, is it shows the changes per Jim Kemp phone call on September 11th, 2025, September 11th, September 11th. And those are changes to the detention placement, personnel services, professional services, litigation out of the general fund in the commissioner's budget. On September the 11th, Gary Hewitt and Kevin Patrick were in my office. And Gary Hewitt and Kevin Patrick and Jim Kemp all discussed these four changes.
They might have discussed them, but did they vote on them in their meetings? Did we vote on our meetings? That's my question.
You voted to approve the budget. You got a copy of the budget, okay?
But I don't recall us.
Well, let me ask you a question.
I mean, I'm not trying to pickify, I'm just saying, I don't recall a specific. Well, let me finish. I don't recall us specifically being told that we were going to, and if I missed that part of it, just tell me. But I don't specifically, you know, one of the things was, let's just cut the cleaning grant, how do you, cleaning money, how do we cut cleaning money out of an office building? We don't, you know, that was one of the things that I was told, I mean.
And let me just say this, what I was, you know, the commissioners have their budget, highway, everybody's got their, their own budgets, right? But we as a council, we don't have one budget, we have 30 budgets. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that our primary responsibility is to make sure that each and every year we have a budget surplus.
It is.
Okay, all right.
And I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
However, during our budget hearings, I feel that that's when those discussions should happen of we don't need X amount. And this gets back to what we have talked about before, is they come before us, yes, maybe we don't need 30,000, maybe we only need 25, let's cut five out. To me, that's where those things happen.
But when you have a $42,000 increase in that unexpected increase for the, the Board of Elections, you're running a deficit. You know, where do you find the money to know that you've got a $42,000 expense and, and, you know, and how do you make those decisions to say, I've got a $42,000 expense in the election board? Where do I find the money to be able to cover this? Knowing that you can go in and make adjustments that Gary Hewitt and Kevin Patrick agreed to. No, we agreed to. We agreed, you guys agreed.
And voted upon.
You gave me the go-ahead to contact Reedy to make the adjustments in the budget. Because this also falls back into the same issue with regards to, to Scott, you brought up during this process, the council's budget. And my quest, my understanding is on the council's Form 1 that was submitted to the auditor's office was actually prepared by Julie Reeves, was it not? So the council didn't even do their own Form 1. The auditor did it, okay? So I.
We should have.
Well, we didn't do it. All right, we didn't do it, all right? And so, I mean, I'm not going to disagree with what your position is, because you're right, you know? But an issue is what we're trying to solve for is to make sure that we are running budget surpluses, not budget deficits. Because if we continue to run budget deficits, you are going to burn down your reserves. That's just all there is to it. And that's where we're headed. And so it's, now, the other thing of it is, is is it a crisis? No, it's not. I took, you know, there was conversations about them going in, the commissioners, you know, getting rid of HSA. They changed their mind and didn't get rid of it. Is that a problem? I took it out of the budget, no. All we got to do now is do an additional appropriation and pay that money. But what we have to track as we move forward this year is every time there is an additional appropriation, you better pay attention to how much red ink are you writing? And I'll just.
I agree.
Well, and I'll finish with this. And I, the reason I'm primarily focusing on the general fund is keep in mind, the general fund is responsible for 66% of the overall labor cost in Brown County. So it bears the big burden for labor costs. So, commissioners, any more money?
The concern is our discussion does not qualify as a council decision.
Right, or and voted upon.
Correct. So you, we could have said, yeah, okay, you put these to Reedy and they explore it. That still does not make a decision.
No, but also let me finish with this, is that those decisions, those changes were made in the budget, the 26 budget, and each and every one of you received the, the budget book number four that had those changes in there and they were all notated. So each and every one of you had the budget book and you could have gone through the budget book and you would have clearly saw that those changes were made and then we could have discussed them.
And the problem was the liaison approach between us and the commissioners was not closed looped as far as we, I mean, we didn't define it clear, clearly enough, but it should have been gone through somehow Tim didn't, wasn't able to.
We weren't working.
Somehow either Kevin didn't convey it or we didn't liaison enough, probably wouldn't convey that, so something.
Well, there's room for improvement for you, for everyone, for 2026, obviously.
I mean, I think, I mean, Judy, to your point, I mean, just looking at, okay, so we have an issue with communicate, internal communication. So how do we fix that? I did see some of these items taken out, most of them, I think, but some of them are not self-explanatory, they're, it's, I don't know what they are, it's just professional services, but, you know, what's the context, what, what was the discussion? So one of the solutions to that problem of internal communication is just make our finance committee meetings public.
That's fine.
So Judy can listen, I can listen, Joel can listen, you know, Patrick can listen and we can understand, Kevin can listen, Tim can listen, Tim's in the meetings. But, and so the second thing I think we need to talk about in our, maybe our next meeting is committee assignments, two things like the finance committee. And so, and then the 2026 budget process, making sure the same, some people anticipated these mistakes in the budget process, others didn't. But we hopefully can learn from those and improve immediately, because it does not surprise me how this happened. So, and, and so I want it to be fixed immediately. And so I think we need committee assignments, we need the 2026 budget, you know, our next year's budget process starts now. And we debrief from those mistakes, make the corrections and move forward.
I agree.
This is, this is one of the down, and I've brought this up several times, when we talk about a committee for this, a committee for that, a committee for that, that takes four of the council members out of the discussion, which is why I don't like, which is what I thought the Thursday meetings were for, so we can have to rely on committees. The entire council could be brought up to speed on everything we're doing. Eliminate the committees, because then the committees then have to come back and relate to the rest of the council. If council already knows, then we can save that time of a committee relating to council when council has already been involved in all of that process.
Council's not the only people that needs to know this.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying. If we, if we set up a committee for every decision that has been made, there's a lot of people getting left out of it.
Well, and the most important people that need to understand what we're doing is the people whose money we are spending.
Absolutely.
The taxpayers. And there's 15,500 amount out there, you know, they matter.
I would like to rely less on committees and more on our Thursday work session.
No, I like that and I would.
But sometimes we'll need committees.
I think it's a double.
But then they got to come in and explain these things and these.
We have to have communication.
Yeah, putting three people in charge of the entire council's budget.
Was five hours of discussion to bring this, that's the license, what we're trying to do here, but that, so some committees may have.
Right, yeah, that was an effective, you know, and I've, I've reflected it was a very, very good effective meeting for the, for the WIS study, so.
Yeah, right. It's just, I think you're talking about the finance committee.
I'm not saying eliminate committees, I'm just saying reduce, reduce our dependence on committees and actually solve these issues during, during our work sessions.
And also, so I mean, just like, make the finance committee meetings public or make the entire council the finance committee. And we, in our work sessions, spend significant time in public meetings discussing the budget like we should.
Yeah.
But two.
But on, on, on this last year, we had, we had a lot going on. I mean, the WIS study, we're completely changing, you know, the, the, the structure of the payroll, you know, so there was a lot going on this year.
We're always going to have stuff like that. But two, I think department head engagement and communication in those budget work sessions or finance committee meetings, whatever we decide to do.
Or imperative.
And it's imperative, let's start in January, rotating through three department heads a month and getting, you know, engaging them. Jerry, also on that point with department head engagements, because they're going to help us straighten a lot of this out, right? They see all of these problems that are coming to us with additional appropriations, eight months, 30 months later, these are department heads finding these things, digging them out, they understand their budgets and they'll understand a lot more if we actually provide the budget monthly data and access to them or their review every month or more frequently. And I don't think that's been happening. I think the budget itself may be delayed in getting to them. We've got to improve that for 2026.
Question, do the department heads have access to LOAIS or where they could go in and pull up?
Oh, that's a good question.
And look at their budgets, look at their line items.
You talked about that yesterday, I'm going to get ahold of LOAIS to see if that's possible. Then I want to, I want to give reports to each and every department head.
Well, my question is, is that I would think that LOAIS ought to have the ability to have a read-only, to where the department heads could go in.
Yeah, I can just give them access to the reports and I'm the one that gives them the access.
To where they could go in and re, and they can look at their whole budget to know where they are year-to-date, how much is an additional item.
Very funny, because that's exactly what we were talking about yesterday.
But as of historically, they've not been, so they're over here.
Had no, no.
So they're operating in the blind and they have no idea where they are unless they physically come to your office.
We used to get them years ago.
Yeah, we, there was, this is not rock, I mean, this, and I would say, I mean, it's not my decision to hire, you know, the software platforms, we paid a lot of money for that software and it's been updated recently. And if we can't share budget information with department heads, maybe we need to do another.
That was part of the benefit.
Completely.
Now, the other one had it, I used to get them monthly.
How many people you can use, which is what we liked about it.
Yeah, that's a real big benefit.
We used to get them monthly, now the auditor's office had to print them out, we didn't have to.
Hang on a minute, I'm not talking, still, to be clear, I'm not Julie, I'm not talking about the auditors having to print off reams.
No, no, not now, not this day and age.
Unless that's easier way to do it.
I'm just simply asking that the sheriff, somebody in the sheriff's department could go in.
Personally, that, that each person needs to have the reports to their, out their fingertips, where the auditor's office does not have to be responsible for calling them and saying, hey.
Not this day and age.
You're in the red, you need to fix this.
Yeah, that's, okay, good. So you guys are working on that.
Yes.
Used to, they had to print it out for us monthly and that kind of thing, but now this day and age, they ought to be able to.
They'd be able to get it on their phone, alert.
Print it out.
I just want to check with LOAIS, make sure there's no additional fees. And, and then as far as I've talked with Eric and get him to put it on each department head and elected officials' computer.
Yeah, and if it's, I mean, it can also, if it's, I mean, based on whatever recall is paying for the system, it should be pretty usable by our department heads, but if it's not and it's clunky and it's there, and then maybe we do print off a monthly, like we do with the council.
The only thing that they'll have access to is the reports for their own, I mean, to the reports, where they can go in and look at their own budgets. And we will show them how to do that. It's not that hard.
Okay.
It's pretty, pretty easy. They can go in and go to the reports and then they just go to their own, like, funds or whatever. And then, or not if they want to print it out, not, but they don't, it's printed out as long as they know where they're at.
Yeah, I think, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, that's one of the things that we, I looked at LOAIS itself, and it seems to be a state of Indiana center system. And quite often, when you put it in a reporting system, the first group just turns, they move on and the second and third group don't have a clue. So there's, in my past, I've, I've seen where the software company will come in and do a one-day education process to kind of bring their.
Yeah, I'm sure they will.
I'm sure we're already paying for it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure we're already paying for it multiple times, yeah.
LOAIS will come in and do that kind of thing.
What is the licensing fee for that per year, you know, off the top of your.
Like, right now, it's 42,000. That's a lot of money.
Jerry, did we solve all your problems?
Sorry.
I don't think we solved any problems, Jerry.
Time, screen, bathroom break is about time, so we got to take a break here a minute.
Go ahead.
Darren was checking if the water is flowing because they're covering up the hole over there.
I don't think so, because they're digging over here.
Going back to this report, still on the 2026 funding projection, you can see, obviously, this isn't all of your guys' speech funds, clearly cut, you know, your main ones. Collectively, you can see that there's still, you know, surplus of 356,000, but that takes to, into account very specific.
Where are you, Jerry, sorry?
So the surplus deficit.
You want 2017?
26.
26.
All the way at the very bottom, collectively, between all of these, you can see that there's still, you know, surplus, but there's, there's big surpluses in certain funds that are more restricted in their use. So you can see that, you know, the convention fund, there's a bigger surplus there, but there's always so much that you can shift over there. If you, if that was even something that was agreed upon. So what I ended up doing was at the very bottom, little box here, these funds have a little bit more flexibility in a roundoff way, and, you know, even health, you can move property taxes. But I took those surplus deficits and the total there was still, you know, a deficit of 160,000. The two big, you know, concerns would be general fund. And then we discussed this on Tuesday. There's a, it's listed, Brown County 911 grant, but my understanding from that, it's not a grant, but that's a fund that needs to be cleaned up anyways, but it's a, because of the, I mean, it has a negative cash. But it's a, because of the, I mean, it has a negative cash balance. But moving forward, you know, if the revenues, you know, aren't supporting that budget, you know, then that's gonna have to be, you know, funded from somewhere else also, which is most likely going to be the general fund. So that's included in this, you know, little box there at the bottom. So overall, you know, after, you know, including the internal base and assuming the budget changes and the commissioners' changes, there is a deficit currently. Now opioid, we only, we were able to find, I think it was the state attorney general office that had projections. And of course, they're like, these are subject to change, and obviously, they're kind of all over the place, but we put those in there. Now, in this surplus deficit, I only wanted to show that ongoing. I understand that there's cash balances in there, so you could use, you know, some of that cash, you know, on hand to help, you know, with the 2026. So if you use more of the cash on hand, you could potentially, you know, balance things out in 2026. But then when we get into 2027, it, like, take away these, you know, one-time, you know, revenues coming in. I know that the travel money is potentially for grants, but, and another thing I do, one, one out that I included up here was Riverboat. And I know that was another one where you guys potentially talked about using it for grants, so, but, so if you take that out, obviously, it's gonna look, you know, a little bit worse. So that's how 26 looks going into 27.
I have a question before you go into 27. And I'm looking at the, the box that shows the total of, let's, let's just look at the, I just wanna look at the general fund. The report I'm looking at is the internal base, which shows a deficit of 123,237. Now, that deficit of 123,237.
Jim, where are you?
I, I, yeah, at the top, just go across the top, look at the general fund. You're showing a deficit, and I'm assuming that deficit, what I'm looking at here, is this is if we implement the factor evaluation internal basis. So in other words, we true everything up.
Right.
Correct? All right, now, to get at that 123,237 number, I'm assuming you're using the 176 that was forecasted to be left over on the budget that we adopt.
The surplus, cash surplus.
The surplus, and then, and my question is this, is that, is that 123,237, does that include the 262,315? So we go ahead in 26, do additional appropriations, reappropriate that money back into the commissioners' budget. And so even if we reappropriate that money and we implement the, the factor evaluation system with the internal, the true-up thing, we're only projected to be in the whole 123,237.
That's a lot less than I expected.
Yeah, that's pretty good, actually.
Key in mind, when we talk about making appropriations, this assumes that, you know, outside of, you know, cleaning up the commissioners, obviously, that'll have to be additional. But any, you know, departments that come in and ask for additional, it's just gonna raise that deficit, raise that deficit, so.
We'll just have to watch it.
Right.
What is your term?
So, right, if you really wanted to move in this direction, you have to tell all elected officials and department heads, you cannot have an additional appropriation next year, because we're trying to get your employees something, right, as a result of our WIS study.
I like telling them that anyway.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Well, the thing is, we can't just tell them that, and then halfway through the year, say, okay, well, here's the additional.
I think the message is, if it's not an emergency, we can't afford it, or, you know, if it's not a, we just have to protect.
If we say no additional appropriations, then we can have no additional appropriations, you can find it somewhere in your budget and cut that expense out.
I agree with everything everybody said, and the only thing I would add to it is, we need to explain the why. And they probably ought to be looking at this report right here so that they understand why, and, and walk them through it, so they understand how to comprehend this report. Because once they can comprehend and realize that this is not us over here going, hey, you know.
And that the outcome of this is what they've been asking for for a long time.
Yeah.
And better understandable compensation for the 40s.
That is basically what they've been asking for.
Uh-huh.
It's not going to satisfy.
Well, no.
No, nobody's, not everybody's gonna be happy.
Because everybody wants more money.
Yeah, I know, but we gotta do what we gotta do.
We don't want more money. We don't want more.
Jerry, Jerry also to expand.
You know, looking at the numbers, this is what we can't do right now, so.
Correct.
Well, I want.
He's got a caveat, I think.
Yeah, before we get too ahead of ourselves, I do wanna show you 2027.
Well, that's, and before we get there, we're on 26. This also assumes a certain level of unspent, unmade spending of 25. And we're talking about encumbrances, material, and then there's policy, Susan.
So any, any of those encumbrances that you're, you know, because this is a snapshot of 2026, it assumes those budgets and amounts of revenues. So, an easier way to look at it, any of those encumbrances that are coming in, for the 26 budget and revenues, it doesn't affect it, but it's gonna decrease cash.
Projective cash balance.
Because I still, like, because those encumbrances, it, it's 25 spending, I don't like to look at it at 26, look at any version of revenues. But yes, any of those encumbrances, yeah, it's gonna eat into the cash.
And so, yeah.
On the end report, if, if hypothetically say this is exactly how we turn out for 26. Now, on the end report, you would see a cash spin-down of more than that.
Right.
But it's because of the 25 spending coming over, but we just like to keep 26 revenues and 26 expenditures, just because it's important to see, like, okay, are we gonna have an operating deficit? Is it gonna continue, and we just pray that revenue catch-up, or?
Is this, is this, but, is this deficit number based on us spending 100% of the 25 budget?
This is 26.
Well.
No, well, we'll have some 25, correct?
Well, this isn't a cash, this isn't, this isn't cash, it's budget.
Well, I know, but I'm saying if we, if we roll over the cash from 25 into 26, we could wipe out this deficit with cash that's not spent. No, no, I, I, I'm, yeah, I'm confusing words.
I know what you're saying, but.
Which is covered the.
It's not contemplated here, it's cash, it's a cash flow, right?
Julie?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we were, and then we, on next year's budget process, we've got to get our budget to 90% of the 25 budget. So we actually have to make cuts.
Darren, I think you and I were talking about the projected cash balance line, and you're, and Jerry's talking about the operating fund balance.
I'm working at the 26 projected surplus deficit.
See, that's not a cat, that's, and, but, you know, I mean, we're talking about.
Well, I know, I know, as I said, I'm, I'm combining two different things.
Yeah, as we're trying to tally up here, yeah. You're right.
Julie.
Yes.
It doesn't affect the cash balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that you're gonna become before the council to do some additional appropriations to clean up negative balances, is that true?
I don't have a choice, we have a prosecutor in particular.
No, I know, we've talked about this in the past, you and I took discussions, and it issued, what we don't know is exactly how, because you got, we had 148,000 in additional appropriations for the commissioners. Just recently. And then you're gonna have another amount coming in, and so that's the only reason I wanna bring that up, keep in mind that's coming.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Right, right.
But, I mean, we had a conversation about the prosecutor's 87,000 dollar.
It's 87 grand, isn't it?
Yeah, it's 80, I think it's 83.
Is it 83?
I don't know. Where he, he sent in this request to give his people bonuses.
We can't do that.
Right.
Let's, I think, let's, let's hear from him, let's, let's wait to talk about.
Susan was going to look into that.
We're not hearing the whole story.
I mean, he's gotta, where, where are we putting the responsibility on him at? Because he has to have some kind of responsibility for his own budget.
I, I agree. When you, when you take a grant, it is that department head's responsibility to.
What makes it, where's his responsibility?
When you take on a grant, let me finish, when you take on a grant, it is that department head's responsibility to stay on it. And if that money is not being reimbursed by the state, or if it is being reimbursed by the state, it is up to that department head to make sure that that money is going back in there to reimburse it. It is not up to county council, in my opinion, to go, oh, you're not doing your thing here, you need to be, we're not here to monitor them. It is up to that department head to stay on top of their own grants and make sure that if it's a reimbursement, to do it. That's just my opinion.
What if that, I mean, we just heard the department heads aren't getting any budget updates?
But this has went on before.
So how are they doing that? If they don't see their budget or revenues, how do they do this?
They get information from the state.
Take a break.
You get ACHs, you get, yes, they do.
I'm sorry, the council want their budget is off.
They sure do, plus you get nothing.
But if we're not getting budget reports, it's kinda hard to measure like.
Just don't drink it.
10 minutes, 10 minutes, right, no longer 20, 10 minutes.
What's the main budget on it? None of that is visible, it sounds like, I mean, which is shocking.
But this is the thing, we're wasting a lot. You better hustle, you might be able to get one.
Oh, I'm sure it has. Do you think that should be happening?
It, it, they need to be staying on it, and why come to us for your, for your play going on?
Well, I'm just saying, we gotta, if, if departments are getting that.
Susan had the best explanation for what happened with that, because.
Okay, well, that's what'd be great to hear.
Ted did not keep up with the matches, is what he was supposed to match. That's how clinic got into that kind of problem.
It's not up to the auditor for us to keep up with that, it's up to the department head.
I'm not sure, I just think we need to make sure the head understands.
But the issue here is, he's trying to give people bonuses with money that he should be spending towards that.
Let's, let's wait for these people to be here.
They don't need to do that.
So bonus plans even qualify as a, it's.
Jerry, you want to go to 2027 sheet here?
Oh, that's IBD fund, so we can do that.
You doing all right?
I am.
Life good?
I'm good.
Cool.
No, I've always promised you mine.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jerry.
So on the, really, switch to the 2027 funding projections.
Got it.
The other single page is very similar to the 26.
Is this what we're looking at?
I do want to clarify.
Yep, 2027 funding.
I was just kidding.
Listen up. For the 2027 budget, the green part, which is the salary part, I explained that earlier. But as far as the salaries, like if you're at an internal base, you get a 3% increase. But if you're already over it, you don't. So that's the green part. You can go back there if I get it in per. Now, for supplies, other services and charges, we were talking on Tuesday. We did a 3% increase on those, but capital is tricky. We just kept it the same. I know that Tim's been working diligently on the capital. We really need to build that into the financial plan. Because there's things that you guys, you know, you need to plan for, and then even outside of that, we can do this. And this is one of the changes, so I can explain that. We took out the 500,000 of the public safety for the contract for 27. Because my understanding, it was once every 10 years. Is that correct?
It's about 911.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we did take that out. But as far as that goes, the Lit Public Safety, yeah, has a surplus of, you know, 25 grand. But a substantial amount of cash is being spent down in 26. Well, 2027, your cash, after a surplus of 285,000. Well, you need to start planning to build that cash up. So also.
Yeah, two things, Jerry, on that. Would you, one, would you recommend we create a mechanism to do a cumulative capital fund to prepare for the 10-year half million plus 911 funds? We don't repeat the safety of this year, kind of deal the surprise pain of a half million dollar contract. And two, Jim, didn't our credit rating get dinged because we don't have a capital asset plan as well?
That was a factor.
It was a factor. So what do you think, do we?
I mean, we could build it in. And I mean, if you wanted to create some other fund and, you know, earmark and, you know, a portion that comes out and funnels into that fund in anticipation to make sure that, you know, oh, we, you know, what you guys hopefully, you know, wouldn't forget, but there's, you gotta have a bunch of cash to lit public safety. And it's like, oh, let's spend this. And then all of a sudden, that contract pops up. It may be safer to plan it that way. If not, we would build it into your financial plan and, because, yeah, I mean, that hit. But yeah, it may be, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of creating funds, you know, and use it.
I think we figured it out.
That would be a good example of utilizing that, so to speak.
Well, and so, simplest path here, maybe keeping it simple for us, some baby steps first, look, budget for a 10-year half million dollar plus expenditure from 911 out of that fund. Let's just budget for it minimum. And if we feel like after that, we need to create a fund and do a cumulative capital, non-reverting fund, let's do that.
We already had that. It's Q and C. We need to use Q and C for what.
No, this is for 911 purposes only.
No, because Q and C.
Well, no.
I don't know that we put money into Q. Yeah, that gets complicated, but yeah.
I like to use the, this is like an escrow account.
Yeah, there's something like that.
Is what it is.
Yeah.
Right.
But if we budget for it, that accounts for it every year. We're doing 50,000, whatever that is.
Yeah, adjusted for inflation and.
No, what I'm saying is, we are Q and C, we are spending, we have some recurring budget items that come out of Q and C. When you take that, we need to figure out a way to get that out of the Q and C and use Q and C for its intended purpose.
Your IT department is basically working out of Q and C.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. We have expenses out of Q and C that shouldn't be expenses out of Q and C. We need to figure out some way.
Non-capital, you mean, or non-capital, is that all for capital?
Annual recurring costs.
Operational.
Yeah. Q and C is supposed to be our capital investment savings account.
Yeah.
To cover stuff like 911 contracts.
Well, but isn't this other 911 fund for the 911? Like, isn't that where we would?
Well, in 911 region, that's right.
Right. So I'm trying to, right. But we can kind of unpeel the onion if we start, like, budgeting more.
We have to clean up some of the clutter to make, to make stuff easier to manage and with some tender than what was.
Well, we're trying to eliminate future emergencies. Plan in advance for future emergencies.
Yeah, there's 20,000 projections that do work.
It's like JALACF stuff, the capital asset planning. I mean.
Hey, Jerry, go. So let me see, any other, I think that was pretty much it. And then you can see even the purple, the surplus stuff that I've been focusing on. It's, you know, almost 390 grand. I was talking to Scott a little bit during the break. What really factors into that is Sen enrolled Act One. So some of the, you know, deductions and a big thing is credits. There's additional credits that taxpayers receive. That's starting in 26. So you do see, like, we have it factored into the financial plan, but that grows more. We did, you know, an analysis for you guys. So that eats up a lot of, you know, your property tax growth, you know, over that year. So that's why.
You said that's reflected in the 26.
Yeah, it is reflected in the 26 projections, but it's not as large. It grows in the 2027.
Right. But that's all subject to any tweak they do with this.
Well, 25, yes, I mean, they could always make changes, but those changes that I'm talking about, they're starting immediately in 26. So, and then they're being phased in, but the credits, you know, start off immediately.
So I mean, I'm not quit, I'm just, for clarification, the 27, the 27 projected deficit is based on that one as it is right now.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
But yeah.
So we're not taking into account any of the tweaks or changes that are inevitable in this session, so.
Correct. I would think that if anything, it would be more on the compact side that they're going to change. Which that's not effective currently until 2028. You know, I've thought about that. That is something, and, you know, I've said it before, but it needs to be stepped. Because you guys have options, but obviously, it's a balance of, you know, how, under the current structure, you know, taxpayers are paying, you know, X amount for property taxes, X amount for income taxes. Under this new change, and depending on what rates you guys want to implement, because you'll have to do it in 27 through 28, how does that affect, you know, those taxpayers also? And we can do different scenarios. You guys do have options, but obviously, you want to be cognizant of what that's going to do to taxpayers as well.
That's.
And there are rumblings of that potential, like some of the income tax structures potentially changing, whether or not it's rates or whether or not it's, you know, pushed back, you know, a year or two. But the way it sits currently, if there are no changes, you guys will have to make those decisions in 2027 or 2028.
Just as a note to the council, you may recall, as I was advocating for inkeeper's tax to be used for public safety, as the council wanted this, particularly on the Senate side, but I think on both sides, they were, it was pretty clear they wanted us to increase income taxes to provide additional funding for public safety if it was needed. And so.
It was specifically stated by them, max out, max out your income tax.
Yeah, it was pretty clear to me.
Which pissed me off.
Yeah, it was rough.
Well, telling you that's gruesome, we're not here.
And here, and so Jerry's pointing out, when he says options, we have options, what you're actually saying is we could increase taxes. And I've kind of explained to Jerry, my thought, the council, is that's not something we want to do.
That's not an option for me.
And so we've got to kind of plan within that reality and then hope we can make it work.
Because we're already at the top on the income tax, so.
2.55 now. What we did learn in these hearings and exploring further when they said, we want you to max it out, is we're 2.55% income tax, but that includes a 0.5% property tax offset. And so we actually have another 0.5, and they increased it. We can go up to 2.9 now, I think. And so it gets complicated, but I'm just giving you that, like, they, if they're going to make a change, I agree with Jerry. It's like they're going to want us to do more on the income tax side.
Right, but what I don't know is when do I start feeling the pain of the referendum for the school corporation, number one? Number two, when's the additional pain going to occur with the new football field that's going in? So, you know, county is one thing, but don't forget the schools over here taking 60% of the property tax. So I, anyway, I agree with you.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm right here. Anyway.
Cut your expenses, sorry. Yeah.
So yes, 2027 on the property tax side, the changes from Senate enrolled Act One are, that's why we're seeing, you know, even more of a projected deficit in 2027. So same thing we did for 2026, there at the bottom, we, you know, looked at, you know, the funds where you can kind of have some flexibility between. And obviously, you know, that's somewhat, you know, drastically help also, help, it has property tax revenue coming in. So if I see anyone, it is as well. And then there's still the, you know, the Brown County 911 grant ongoing deficit. Where, you know, that's going to have to be, you know, swallowed up somewhere, that deficit. So overall, the deficit is like 200 in 26, but in 27, you know, well, it's just over 468,000.
So I'm over here thinking. And what I'm thinking is for 2026, that basically, we could give the commissioners all their money that we took out. Only be 123 grand in the red on the general fund, and y'all could implement the, the true-up, the new FES.
She calls it whist light. Yeah.
And is that, is that, is my, is that assumption correct?
My concern is moving forward in 2027.
It's weird. I understand that. That's, I understand that.
I think that there's a couple of things to consider then with that. You know, Jerry put you in at a 3% raise then in 27, which could result anywhere from.
175,000.
Right, it could be 75 to 100,000 dollars every percent, right? So if you want to do whist light and potentially look at a 2% raise to try to, again, catch those people up if they're, if they're not met up with the people that are over the internal base right now, yeah.
Could the process, the process over the next 27, 28, 29, is, what the objective is, is to get the FES system and move it gradually, as you can cash flow it, to where you're the full median external.
Correct.
Yeah, you're going to have to kind of ratchet it, because then, I think, when I hear, you know, we are at the max levy and have been, and so are all 91 other counties. Everybody's at the max levy. So the only thing ever.
Property tax.
Correct, right. And so the only increase you're going to get on property taxes is this 4% growth quotient. That's it. So, because you're going to ask for $10 million more, but they ain't going to give it to you because you're already hit the max levy, so, all right. So what you have to kind of monitor is, we've got to pay a real close attention to these miscellaneous revenues in the general fund and really stay on top of those, and then try to gradually stair-step it up to the point. And it may be in that, in taking that approach, because that would be an approach, it may be those that are already kind of at the top end of the scale may not see much, whereas, because what we're trying to do is really true up the bottom.
Exactly. And we're not going to make everybody happy.
Yeah, everybody's going to be happy, so, you know.
Jim, I mean, if we're trying to accelerate that true-up, and again, in my mind, I think Sheriff, a couple of department heads have talked about some very low-paid individual positions that are in our government, right, compared to some that are close to the top. But these very low that are probably not at a sustainable wage.
Probably their cooks.
If we could, yeah, like some of the jailers and stuff. If we, what if we look at that bottom 50% and we say, hey, you know, they are the most in need and we kind of try to get them up to par quicker, well, at least up to par with the top 50% that's under. I mean, you know, and see what I'm trying to say here.
Yeah, I understand exactly.
Focus where the problem is the most acute. Those people are struggling. If you look at some of these wages.
Well, when you got pay grades eights, pay grade nines, come on. I mean, it's.
Good Lord.
You know, they're not.
And the other thing that Jerry did not put into any of his numbers, it's what Greg last year would call your pennies from heaven, your supplemental, right? You never know if you're going to get that. So that's not included in any of these projections.
Which is why I don't want it included in any of it.
Exactly.
And if you get it, then it's finished from heaven.
It's potentially a source to help you.
Counting on it.
You know, if you do get it in 26, reserve that for pay raises in 27 to help you hit maybe your 2% or maybe your 3%.
And Jerry, that is a, that local income tax supplemental distribution from the state to the county is based on whether or not the income within our county and all of our county residents is above what is predicted by the state or below what is predicted.
That's the 15% from the table.
That's 15%, like, so if that balance that the state keeps, the trust account balance is over 15%, then they'll give you a one-time distribution.
So, I mean, Jim, on the economic front, right, I mean, so it's kind of an economic, you know, there's an indicator there. Like, if the economy is good, we may get more. If the economy is not great, we may not get as much of the supplemental, right? And so.
And I think the assumption going forward in the next, you know, the next two or three years, next year, you know, I'm, you could say the market's overvalued now. You could make the argument the market's overvalued. But if you look at all the stuff the current administration is doing, and when that stuff begins to kick in, and the amount of money that they got, the capital that's pouring into this country, then the wage base, we want to lift the wage base to offset the inflation that we've had over the last four or five years. So that, so that would help us from a revenue standpoint.
Year two, year three, kind of will see.
You should see an increase in revenues, which will help our income tax, and which then, to me, to tie it down, if that income tax then does come up, right, because the wages are rising, then, what's it called? What's this, what's the term?
Non-farm income?
No, 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 no. That'd be me, non-farm.
Oh, that's right.
No, the, this, the Department of Revenue hangs on 15%.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so what happened, just so that, this is educational. So if you're, the rising labor cost arising, which means we're collecting more income tax, right, then that affects that supplemental that they've been hanging on to, and then that's when they cut the check back to the county for the excess. That's how that works.
Yeah, okay.
Another penny's from heaven constipated, that's a big variable we have is our 4,700. Another penny from heaven constable, that's a big variable we have is our forty seven hundred. I'm just curious how that's going to play into this.
I, I just, Jerry and I just talked about that, and because we pulled seven hundred grand out, additional, out of the economic development fund, okay? And so he's got in twenty seven, I didn't mean to talk over you. Okay, it, on the eleven, twelve economic development, in twenty seven, we've got the same funding for the forty seven hundred account into that economic, which is a million one total. And, and we're still, you know, we're not burning down the reserves completely.
Jim, what's a million one?
It's, we're pulling, keep in mind, you know, we've got, what is it, two point seven million, two point eight million for group medical for twenty twenty six.
Budgeted?
Yeah.
I know, it's budgeted, but we're not going to spend all that.
I hope not, I hope not.
You just don't know what kind of claims you're getting at the end of the year.
Yeah, I, I think we will have, we, we are at, yeah, I know.
We could potentially.
Let's not count on it.
Let's not count on it.
Six, was it fifty six?
I think you said something like that, yeah.
Yes, that's great.
But we don't know.
And this being December, it's really.
The only thing I guard, because keep in mind, I guard everybody on the previous, you know, life before twenty twenty three, when I first got here, Redding looked at me and said, Ken, go do a deep dive on group medical, because that's our biggest risk as a county. So I went in and did my deep dive, and it was during that deep dive that I discovered what had happened is the council had been running five to six, seven hundred thousand negative carryover balances. So they did, they wouldn't go in and pull the money out to true that up, to get it back to zero. So necessarily, we just continued to run negative balances. And so, so we had to go in, so we went in, and then the only thing that bailed us out in twenty three was somehow.
Pennies from heaven.
We had, well, it's too many bucks, so, right, and it bailed us out, and so the only thing I ask going forward, if we do run into reserves in the black and the forty seven hundred, let's please not underfund group medical for the next year, because you got too much in reserves.
Exactly.
Yeah, please don't do that, because on the flip side of the coin, also keep in mind, the rainy day, the rainy day is still sitting at two hundred and seventy eight thousand, and to me, you know, for me, as far as priorities are concerned, you know, it's, 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 get us back to a triple A rating, try to keep our expenses at, you know, at, you know, based, try to keep the county's expenses in line with the Consumer Price Index, okay? Build our cash reserves, get ourselves to the point where we don't have to use the credit card for, for capital improvements, and then be in a position, let's stabilize the tax rates. Will we not, there's no pressure for us to increase taxes. And I think if we do that, then when we talk about, you know, let's, you know, serve the people, well, the definition of serving the people is making sure that there's a high probability that their county taxes and the expenses are going to stabilize, and there's no surprises, right?
With, with the bond, though, one thing to think about is, think of the expenses we have to jail.
No, I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm okay with that.
If we eliminated the bond altogether, we're not going to be able to eliminate it altogether.
Yeah, but that's.
All of that expense from the bond, then we go into this, and we'd be.
If we had four, five, six million dollars in a rainy day fund, we could do it.
Well, let's get Jerry back on track there.
Yeah.
We got to get out of here at noon, so.
Yeah.
Another factor that we have to consider in twenty six is you may have to buy the busker's office, it's not about the go by.
Yeah, we thought that would be a go by.
It could be a four to five, but we can't buy, it could be a four to five hundred dollars area expense.
You could, you can't, okay.
So that's.
That makes absolutely no sense.
You're not what it said.
Problem. It's being discussed.
You can't apply it.
Right. It makes sense from the fraud avoidance issue, think of other counties and what have happened where somebody owns a piece of property, sells it to the county. And I think it's to avoid that.
We got a money in the county that can give us five million bucks.
So. So, yeah, to, to, I mean, Susan's point, like, we don't have supplemental in there, we can make adjustments. If you guys, as far as our assumptions on, you know, salary increases or, you know, the supplies. If, if you, if you do implement this, you know, for, you know, twenty twenty six, I think twenty six, you know, it should be pretty good, because you'll be able to use, you know, cash and bills and things like that, but going into twenty twenty seven, I mean, as long as there's an understanding that other areas outside of, you know, pay might need to be tightened up, and then on top of that, which is maybe even more important, is department heads understanding that, and I'm not saying that this is what they do, but. Well, always come back and ask for more later, because that, that changes these projections drastically. I mean, even, well, Jerry, on that point, just to reiterate, the way we help the department heads plan for their budget is to inform them of the bud, their budget and educate them on that, provide that information, so that we don't end up with a, oh, I didn't know this was happening kind of situation. So we've got to shore up that reporting to both department heads and the council, so that we can all kind of see, hopefully this is coming way further in advance, you know? And they're like, don't get me wrong, there's going to be additional, I mean, departments are going to have, there's going to be something that happens that's not under control. So I'm not saying that, I just want everybody to understand that the assumptions that we have in here, our projections could change depending on the amount of additionals and things that pop up, which that may be the case even if we weren't looking at this salary study, I mean, so.
So is this kind of like, we've got, we want to be able to give everybody a little bigger slice of the pie, and, but we got to find more money so we can buy some more pie, because we don't have enough pie. So, because it's, if we talk about, just using the metaphor of pie, if you got X amount of people and everybody gets, you know, pie definitely typically want divided up in eight slices, right, everybody gets an eighth of a slice.
But Jim, there, the council said we're not interested in making the pie bigger.
Well.
So how do you do that?
Well, then the other.
Everybody's going to get a bigger piece of pie.
Maybe the other, the other issue, you know, and I'll get shot criticized gaslighting Stonewall over this next statement, is, you know, if you've only got so much pie and you want enough people to make sure they get their fair slice of the pie, then you're going to have to limit yourself to how many people are there to eat at the table, okay? And it's, to me, to me, that's just my own personal, you know what I mean? There's only so much pie, give some people some more pie, and if we don't have enough, don't have enough money to buy more pie, then we're going to have to reduce the amount of people that don't.
That you've never known at the table doesn't get it.
They don't get any pie, yeah, right.
All right.
Yeah, and then the last, the only other question I've got to add, and then I'm, is Julie, when I think, you know, and then first of all, you guys, I want to thank all the work that you've done, you guys have done a fabulous job, thank you very much, Jay, for the work that you've done, same thing for you, Susan. But now, if y'all decide to implement this true up approach for twenty twenty six, how difficult is that going to be for Kim to implement this, because that appear, for me, I would.
Definitely going to be time consuming.
Yeah.
She's, she's probably going to have a few late nights and a few weekends.
That's going to be a big hurdle. Kim, our, our, our benefit, benefit person, yeah.
It is going to be quite a challenge.
Oh, yeah, because you got to go, and then everything too, just, stipends are gone if we do this, correct?
Correct.
Listen, listen, let her explain.
Yeah, so we got to clear that up.
Let her explain this.
Then let's get Jerry back on track.
I was going to say, I mean, if you want to look to that Excel spreadsheet that you have up there, Gary, you can. I don't know if that's.
The PDF or the Excel?
PDF would be great.
You give in. He's getting anxious.
Getting hungry.
Right, I mean, there are some things, obviously, clean up, like I need a resolution number in here, but like, you can kind of scroll on down just a little bit. And this is, so this is your WIS Lite proposal.
Yeah, this is really, can you speak just a little?
Yep.
Because of all that noise out there.
There's all that noise out there.
This is important, you guys.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is kind of your WIS Lite proposal, right? This is moving everybody's description and pay rates instead of your one through thirty two, right? Putting them in as a comma, A B or C, a pad, A B or C, a check, things like that, right? So kind of implementing that WIS, that evaluation system, right? And so any person moving into these positions or new hires would fall under these classifications with that pay rate that you see there, right? But then we, I do go ahead and detail underneath of this, because if I, like you said, if they are already above that amount in what they are making with the county, you guys have said, we do not want to reduce someone's salary, that is not our goal here. And so they have stayed in their place, right, so we've made some, some kind of exceptions for here in that. And that's where we get to, again, trying to get everybody into that classification up to the highest level of pay that's in there. And so the person, if they're at the highest level, they may be sticking at their pay rate for a couple of years, because technically, according to WIS, they're overpaid for that position right now. Now, nobody thinks they're overpaid, and I'm not saying anybody is overpaid, but that's just what our independent person has suggested.
Compared with other counties and municipalities and.
Like these people who are on the low end of the scale, right? And so. Like, I'm trying to think, what more, it, it does, WIS Lite does get rid of stipends, right? Because that's really throwing you guys off a lot, except for merit deputies, jailers, and dispatchers, because.
Unstate mandated sky ticks, right?
What you have said.
Scissors.
State, we've said, just let her finish, she's going to get in there.
What you have said in your meetings is that those stipends are dependent upon the DOC holds.
Yeah.
And so.
We got to hurry.
They, we need to keep those DOC holds in order to be able to pay for those stipends, and so.
And if they, that money quits coming in, that goes away.
Okay.
I knew that was going to.
Do you realize we have nothing documented on that at all?
In, in the minutes?
No, we don't.
We talked about it in our, in our minutes.
Okay, Judy, what I'm talking about is specifically documented, a document that spells that whole DOC thing out.
If it's in our minutes and recorded, that's a legal document.
Julie, I'm, Judy, sorry.
Like, wait a minute.
Judy, Judy, stay with me. I'm talking about specifically, okay?
And here's.
Do you know?
I'm going to jump in, because it's in this proposed salary ordinance, it states it in here.
You have.
This will be a document that confines the.
So if you scroll down.
They haven't had time to look at it.
To, yeah, I know, because it was late last night. If you scroll down to these jail, sheriff, whatever comes close, dispatch, there's going to be a statement here, go on down. Stipends for dispatch employees are contingent upon Department of Corrections holds that are housed at the Brown County Jail.
Jim, can you add a detail and get that back to Susan, because I know you want to be, is that enough detail for you?
No, this, I'm assuming it solves what I've, yeah, this didn't exist until you created it.
Okay, so you're happy with this.
So we detailed that with the dispatch employees, with the sheriff employees, with the jail employees, so that that way, right, it is documented, right?
It doesn't technically say how much, though, I mean, Jim, are you okay with that, or?
Well, the stipends are spelled out.
Yeah.
Are they down there? I don't.
They, they're, that's, so I would scroll on down to the page twenty seven.
Which, she explains it, she explains it.
It is data on the right side of this spreadsheet. And so those are the stipends that were in place for this year, right?
And it's spelled that way.
So it is detailed.
For nine one one and jail and sheriffs.
Susan?
Yes.
Just between you, I know, and everybody that's on the YouTube video.
I'm getting cursed, I, I feel pain already.
And Judy, my, my objection to, first of all, the challenge with it is that we don't have anything in writing. The county council does not have a policy, has never had a policy on stipends, number one. Number two, you know, do stipends ever expire? Number three.
Will you let her finish?
Why is she getting into this?
If you let me finish, so I can transition back, okay, because this is a complicated issue, all right? Is that the, 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 so there's no policy on stipends, when they exist, when they don't. Number two is that the challenge with the stipend issue is that once you give an employee this pay, and they get used to getting that pay every two weeks, and that's what they're basing their livelihood off of. And then all of a sudden, you know, last year, we waited forever before we got any sort of reimbursement from the DOC. We'll just assume that will probably be the same thing going forward.
Yes, well.
Well, and so the challenge with it is, is that the reality of it is, is the county council, I'm, and there's no way in the world I would ever want to go back and take this income away from that employee, period, because they're used to, we gave it to them, right? Institute of a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars a year. At issue, the thing that I took issue with is that there was never any specific written documented formula of how they arrived at the individual, each individual was going to receive, okay? There was no formula, there was no nothing, it just says here, this person gets this amount, this person gets this amount, this person gets this amount, and that's not in writing. And then the other thing that we don't have in place is there's nothing that spells out that how often that we as a council should review where we are from a cash flow standpoint on, on receivables from the DOC. You know, so when I say documentation, that's the level of documentation I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know, some motion or something that they made in the minutes, but to where a document that you literally go back to, and it spells everything out line by line on the line, so there's no confusion, there's no misunderstandings, and you don't run, create more problems of yourself in the future.
We did get the chart and the breakdown from the sheriff on that, correct? Has that been entered?
As. They didn't give us a breakdown, they just gave us the amount.
Yeah, they didn't give us anything.
Well, they gave us the amounts, we had the, we had the, we had the summary from the sheriff presented.
Yeah, so what is represented here is just.
That would be probably with the minutes that was taken.
Yeah, and we did vote to adopt that at one point, so we have that document. Where is that document?
Like I just said, it's probably with the, I don't know if they recorded it at all.
Okay, so we, we have documentation on it, I don't know if it's sufficient enough.
But did it spell out how they're doing, how they're calculating? Because I don't remember it's calculating any of it, I just remember saying, this is what we are going to get from this person, from this amount. I don't remember them actually going through and giving a.
They didn't, and, and Julie, just to reinforce it, you know, earlier this year, I don't know, first quarter, second quarter, I'm forgetting to say, because I spent, I've been a four or five hours in your office with Heather Ford before she went to the treasures, and we literally sat there that day, and Heather and I had to go through every pay period, every pay period, pay period, pay period, period, to back in to calculate, to figure out where we were with regards to how much additional stipends we've given above and beyond, and, and it was, it was a lot of work.
Well, I know she has worked on some stipend stuff too here, so I think, if you look at this document.
This number represents not longevity, but does it represent stipends, which can follow?
Only, it, so what is on the screen is a result of your WIS study, that classification study, where they detailed out base salary, longevity, stipends, total compensation. So, you know.
This position also, right?
I, I'm trying to do some, some quick math here, right? Like, for example, you know, what would be your cooks at the jail?
Read some numbers to me, I'll add them up for you, or?
Yeah, cooks at the jail, there are six L E C, right? Which is just under thirty seven thousand dollars in a base salary, with their longevity and stipends total, actually, without longevity, with their stipend, total compensation was, was just under forty one thousand dollars. This puts them at an LTC one. This puts them at an LTC one, puts them at forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, without longevity.
Including a two percent increase or a three percent increase?
No, no, no.
No increase.
No increase, in terms of a salary.
That's, this is, this is, this is trying to get everybody to this internal base. That's where this is.
So, this is the WIS concept that we're seeing in Jerry's thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
WIS light, right here.
WIS light.
This is WIS light.
Jerry used these as a base.
It's not what we approved in the budget.
No.
The budget was old salary groups.
Right.
Right.
So, this is not what we approved in the budget?
No.
No, you're not going with this.
You haven't approved a salary ordinance for next year. What they put in their budgets were what they paid this year, because that's what they were instructed to do.
Right.
Right? That's why you turn everybody down. So, taking into account what you approved in your budget and potentially looking at WIS light, that's where Jerry's calculations, what he just went through, all of that together is where we get to, correct?
Well, how many... Do they represent stipends?
So, do they represent stipends in there for that example?
For the...
Yes, we're, we're moving that person to a pay grade and a salary that gets them what their base pay was in twenty-five, plus what their stipend was.
So, how do we, we don't have stipend anymore for them?
No, the stipend goes into their pay.
It goes into...
Well, for this example, we would have to talk to the sheriff because this is in the jail, right? This person's in the jail.
Their stipend is the DOC stipend.
I know, but was that the discussion, if that goes away, then we have to carry it? So, then, may I be responsible?
We never talked about it.
We never said you were going to carry it. We never said you were going to carry it.
But the thing of it is, if you put that in their pay, you're going to have to carry it. And it won't have anything to do with the DOC money.
Jim's bummed and pop over here, we better, and everyone's hungry, Jim is hungry, he's already said that twice.
No, I'm having fun.
He's eating brownies.
I'm having fun. Julie, DOC money, is it, what, DOC money comes in...
Twice a year.
It goes into a fund, right? Okay, what fund does the DOC money go into? DOC fund?
We made one up.
Pretty much, yeah.
All right.
It is actually a DOC fund.
Okay, what can be, can, cannot, what, what can...
It drops into the general fund, I think it goes into DOC revenue line.
Yes.
So, it goes in the general fund?
Right? Like, let's clear that.
Correct.
It drops into your general fund, but a DOC revenue line, so she can track the revenue coming in.
But it's still in the general fund. Okay, all right.
Is that DOC revenue part of this number?
So, hey, so Julie and Susan and Jerry, the experts, okay? Because I'm just, you know, I'm a serf, I'm a peasant. So, as a peasant...
You don't know what you don't know.
That's right. Don't know what I don't know.
He's consciously well aware.
Unconsciously incompetent.
There you go.
Thank you.
Right. So, that DOC money, when we get that reversed, reversed, reimbursed, goes into the general fund, you track it through the line item, right? So, an issue is really is whether or not the jail continues to try to maintain that revenue source.
Yep.
That's the issue.
That is the issue.
That is really the issue.
That is the big issue.
Okay, so as I said here, is all I'm doing is thinking out loud, is if that's the issue, then, boy, I'd really love to get rid of the stipends completely all the way across the board.
How do you keep them on?
We all do.
Well, that's a separate issue. That's a separate issue.
Why you can't get rid of them?
This is the moment, it's the carrot.
Well, but hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Are we going to take that away from them? What's the probability of us sitting there going...
That's the carrot.
We ain't giving you that hundred and eighty-three anymore. Forget it.
It's the carrot. The sheriff had an agreement that he would...
I understand that.
...get that DOC and get that revenue, that revenue... Hold on, let me finish. Hold on, let me, I'm getting to that.
Darren's hungry, too.
No, I'm not, I'm trying to explain something.
You sure?
These are good. So, we have, we have that money coming in, that money is to be used for stipends for the deputies to bring them up.
I know.
If that goes away, that stipend goes away.
That stipend goes away.
That was the agreement.
It was the agreement.
When we established this.
I understand.
Because we can't afford, we don't have...
That stipend goes away.
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying, yeah, what you're saying.
If they decide to not house DOC...
Yeah, that puts us deeper in the red because then they back off and don't want to do the occupancy rate on the jail.
Which means that stipend goes away because that stipend is...
It's no different than if you hire people with a grant, and a grant goes away, and county council says, well, when the grant goes away, Joe Blow goes away. It's been said for years.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. How do you put the heat on the sheriff to keep the occupancy rate up in the jail to keep the DOC money?
The answer is, if it goes, if, if DOC goes away...
You won't have any employees.
You won't have any money.
All right, so that's your hammer.
You won't have any employees.
That's your hammer.
I'm just thinking out loud.
That's the carrot.
That was part of the agreement from the beginning.
But you, I agree, Julie, you won't have any employees.
Yeah, your people.
That's correct.
So, that, but that's the carrot, to keep that going.
It is an issue, but if you put it into the pay, then you're, you're risking the, I mean, he's just, he could just say, I'm not going to do it.
Well, let me ask you another question. Can the council go in and take money out of another fund that goes to the sheriff's department and take away to reimburse us and stick it in the general fund to offset the fact that his occupancy rates dropped?
Can you unilaterally do that? The answer is no.
Can we legally, anyway, do it?
No, I mean, again...
Because that would be a threat, right?
New dolls will be coming out, right? They're already coming out. You know, there, there are user fee funds, I'm, you know, your recorder pays most of her budget out of record perpetually.
Right, right, right.
Understand that.
Right.
She's supposed to.
Right? Fantastic job for the county. There are other user fee funds that maybe there needs to be discussion with elected officials and department heads about, hey, we're really trying here, can you help us by shifting some things over to your user fee funds, right? Not saying that it has to be that way forever, but maybe to get through these growing pains here of trying to get people in the right salaries, you know, that's a conversation that you have, right? But it, it's conversation. It's not, this is our heavy hammer and what we're going to do because there are particular uses for some of those user fee funds, right? So, some things can't be spent on, you know, whatever, right? Right? And, and those elected officials and department heads know their user fees and what they can use those monies on.
That was a discussion we had, we said if you want to raise their salaries, go earn it, basically.
For, for the sheriff, sheriff, jailer, and dispatch.
We don't have the money, go earn it.
Which is what they've done.
Gave them the opportunity and, and says, okay, if you want to go do it, go do it.
But some that they had no control over.
The question on this then was...
Sometimes they don't have control over it.
Correct.
That's right. Sometimes DOC says, we're coming in, we're spending too much money, we're going to grab every, every prisoner in here and take them back to a DOC facility.
But they're, again, if we're upping everybody, and, and this WIS light was done to give them a reasonable amount of pay, the best that we can, so if, quote, if the stipends went away and you took the money away, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, Brad's already losing two more deputies in the very near future for better pay. So, if we can't give a reasonable pay and we can't say, well, crime is less, that means nothing, go ahead and stay here in Brown County, you're going to lose your employees. I was under the understanding, and maybe I was the only one, that we would institute this stipend, and then eventually, we would absorb that just like everybody else. Maybe I, maybe I...
There was talk of if we can get public safety money from the state for the park, then that would go to replace the DOC.
But if you go losing...
If we get extra money, extra compensation from the state to cover our emergency services that we use for the park, that was, that was a conversation.
We tried to do windkeeper's tax, neither one worked. Gate fee is looking reasonable for maybe next year.
So, now, yeah, this year, we're looking to see what we can get through legislature.
What I think.
So, the agreement was, we are going to try to get compensation from the state for our public safety that we use on half of our property that we can't tax.
Right.
The state is going to try, we're trying to get some kind of compensation to the tune of a quarter million dollars to help us offset our public safety expenses. What we did in the meantime was Brad found, sheriff found revenue from, from housing DOC that gave us, what, a hundred and eighty-four thousand a year, whatever it was. So, we said, whatever money you bring in from that, we will use that to divide up among the sheriff's department employees to bring them up to a higher rate, higher wage. If that DOC money goes away, we do not have it in the general fund to cover it, so if the DOC revenue goes away, those stipends go away. Because we don't have the money for it.
So, then we have another crisis then.
Until, unless we can get something from the state to help us compensate them based on having to have such a, having to maintain our level of emergency services because we have two million extra people in the park. So, that, that was the agreement.
And just remember, as a side note, that jail deputies and dispatch, there are forty-three, forty-seven people, depending on what day of the month it is, it's going to fluctuate, but that is the single largest expense in the county, the personnel expenses, period. I mean, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah, I would like to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, please. Because I gotta go.
I wanted to clarify one thing, too. I'm not picking on the prosecutor.
I'm not either.
I just think that everybody needs to help, be held to the same standards and not just, you know...
Having had to manage grants, I know what is required, and the reporting goes back and forth, and it was on my head, because it wasn't on the auditor's head, it wasn't on the council's head.
I think we have an awesome prosecutor, awesome team. But I just think...
Three years, isn't it?
Yep, go ahead, Susan.
So, I mean, I think...
By Scott.
What this will eventually roll into, right, is holding DOC prisoners will be the norm, right? Before 2025, this was not the norm. So, holding DOC prisoners will be the norm, and is there a fluctuation in that? Yes. But unless Brown County elects a jerk of a sheriff, I think any incoming sheriff is going to maintain holding DOC prisoners. And so, I do think eventually, these, these stipends that, that you're seeing still in twenty-six to be paid to these people because of DOC hold, I do think eventually you're going to be able to absorb those into your base pay.
Eventually.
Do I think it happens in twenty-six or twenty-seven? Probably not, like, we have to get through there. But, again, just, you know, if, it is the expectation that DOC holds will continue, and, you know, it, it's, choose your people wisely.
But in the, in the salary ordinance, have we, have we specifically stated the amount of the stipend?
I'm showing you that right now.
It is in data...
It is there. This is how you...
It's in data to the side. So, if you want a separate agreement with the sheriff that says, these are the stipends that will continue to be paid in twenty-six...
And then, not just this, but I mean, nine-one-one, it's just exactly like that.
Right.
I agree, I think we do need to show that. That's fine.
Yeah, it's there. In the one that she's just, it's there.
Save money.
So, at least for a year or two, we may need to show the stipends until we can supplement it some other form.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, as of right now...
Something else. One step we have taken is to put parks into CVC, so we have maybe a little more money to be available. Did you want to say something?
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, chance of the question, it's a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Hundred and eighty-three, actually.
So, that's, that's the risk, right? And what I was thinking is, you might want to think about doing an options and exposures list, because you're talking about the nine-one-one. If you have an option, exposures at the end of this process, then you'll be looking at it every month. That option hasn't happened, that exposure hasn't happened, so that, this is a key one, right? And I'm going to go back since I, I was involved a long time ago, when the jail was built, Buck sold the size of the jail on housing DOC. So, that was always the intent. We didn't need that big of a jail.
You're exactly right.
Really?
Oh, yeah. You're exactly right.
Ta-da.
Now, and that was my, my comment, and, and I absolutely love our sheriff's department, I love everybody in that department, me, too, but, you know, you talk about incentives, so why haven't we been housing them until now? Well, if, if I don't have to watch three people, and now I have to watch five, right? What am I going to do? It's just keen nature.
Right.
Right? So, I think, I think what, what the proposal is, is to keep this out there so people know for months it came. And then, once they get used to the fact that that was always the plan, then, then integrate it back in.
When you know it was always the plan.
That was always the plan.
It was, yeah.
Can't we let it rent those rooms for overnight short-term stay and put in keepers' packs on?
I didn't want to, I didn't want to have the old town, because I figured we could bring out the...
Turn us to sell.
And the old town.
Do, are we going to need a vote before I leave?
No, I think that, I think that we have very good support, like, unless, and I don't want to take a vote, but... Right, I know. So, so you will have two options. If you want to implement WIS light, right? And I know you guys want to look at it still, because it was a moving target for a while. And I would suggest your list of places that you are the council contact for, go have a chat with people, right? But if we want to implement WIS light, because it is a change from the current pay that we see for people and that, and that the auditor's office is paying in payroll, it would, we would have to approve it manuskly at one Monday, nineteen, on the Sunday.
No, I, actually, right now, I mean, I, you know, looking at the math, you know, I'm okay. We kept no COLA for twenty-five, or, excuse me, for twenty-six.
Right.
And one of the logic or the reason behind that is that what we did is we were able to capture that amount of money that we would have spent in twenty-six on COLA. Well, an issue is, is, well, we didn't spend that. Well, okay, because we didn't spend that, now, had we done three percent COLA, but we didn't do it, and so, that places us in a position to implement the, the FES light.
Right.
It's what is, allows us to do. Okay? And an issue to me is the timing of it, making sure that Julie and Kim and have time to Making sure that Julie and Kim and have time to kind of do the prepare work, to, to work with you to figure out how much time is that going to take to try to get that implemented? When, I think the, I don't want to, the implementation is really critical. And so to me, making a decision now is we're, I think we all probably, I'm going to assume we all probably agree this is where we want to get to, the FES light. And an issue is how soon can we get there? And how do we, how do we implement it? What's that process look like? And be very thorough and make sure we don't make any mistakes, blah, blah, blah.
I think we could change the pay and go forward that way. And then during, you know, not, we could, we don't actually have to go in and like, you know, to get the other implement, implement it as long as the phase correct. We can get, we can take our time, get it correct, get it all in there, implemented after that.
So, because I'm over here thinking that you have to go in and like do all this data entry and change everything and just ignore some.
We will have to do data entry, but I, you know, going in to change the pay will be the major thing. And then we can go back in, change all, get all the payrolls.
So to me, I, I would look for a recommendation from the auditor's office on when the timing would be good to how, how do we implement this approach, this new approach?
Yep, she's already aware that if it goes into effect, then we will be working over time.
So, so once you guys have kind of thrown the green light and said, hey, we're ready, we're, we're locked and loaded, ready to implement this, then we can then simply, right?
That's good to hear.
You're ready to go January one, correct? Basically, yes. Do you hear that, Jim? January one, she said.
January one, we're, we're, we know what's going to have to happen.
Well, if, if that's true, then do we, 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 we're going to, this is an order, this is the new salary ordinance. You still need a little bit of time because we paid you to do a twenty twenty-five salary ordinance. Now we're paying you to do a twenty twenty-six new one, brand new revamped one.
She's kind of done.
So.
Right, yeah, I have two versions going.
I know, you got two versions. And so the reality is, is you, you, you're going to need a little bit more time to polish up the, the FES version, right?
I, there, there are still a couple of questions that I have on, on my spreadsheet, right?
Okay, okay. And so how soon then would you be prepared to, to, for us to be able to pass this ordinance?
If you say yes, you want to hear it on December fifteenth. It will be ready on December fifteenth.
So you're going to have it ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did all that this week, actually.
Do we just absorb them?
No, stipends go away.
Except for.
Except for DOC.
Except for the sheriff people.
Except for everybody else goes away, but, but the sheriff still stays, keeps his.
Yes.
Yeah, sheriff has to stay.
Now, have, have the, have the stipend, the existing stipends for us employees then rolled into their.
That's what I'm going to compare, right? On what whis is calculated in here and showing me where the internal base is. I do think they use that to calculate the internal base.
I think they did because I think I asked them that question and I think that's what they said. They rolled the stipends into it. So that nobody, nobody loses a stipend and has a decreased in pay.
I understand there are certain ones that will stay in. And I wouldn't necessarily call them stipends, but like in your assessor's office, you know, based upon the level of certification, they get a supplement in pay. But if, if it's a level three, they, you know, get fifteen hundred dollars. But then if that person leaves the county and somebody else comes in without that level of certification, they don't get that. So base pay is base pay, but those certifications are separate and are in addition to any base pay.
Right, yeah, the certifications, certifications are different. They're not certificates. What we did with the, what like taking assessors office, for example.
We did them, we gave each employee a thousand dollar stipend because they got rid of a thirty thousand dollar a year program and took that upon themselves.
Right.
So because of that reduction, we're like, okay, we can, we'll bump you a thousand. So that stipend rolls into their, their pay. And going forward, that pay will work its way up to the baseline of the FES across the.
Will be like a real business, kind of.
No, really?
Very good. I, I appreciate you letting me add comments and I have one more there, but. Okay, so what you really do, okay, is, is you're standardizing our employees with all of the other county employees. Because up till now, okay, a employee's wage has been dependent on how well that employee can negotiate with their boss and with everybody else. So if somebody's really good at lobbying about how important they are and, and gets to the right people, I know, I know you wouldn't be influenced, but, you know, gets to the right people. All of a sudden, I'm making ten thousand dollars more doing less of a job.
Right.
Than somebody else. And, and, you know, I made a comment and, and I used the word toxic. I, I felt for a long time, this office has to be terrible to work. Yeah. And then what happens with, on that then is the other employees say, well, they got more.
Right.
And so you've got this constant conflict and you have nothing concrete you can go back and say.
Correct.
That's what we're trying to.
That's what it fixes.
This is a new foundation, right?
This is a new foundation. It's the fairest method possible.
Right.
And if you, and if you feel that, that you're not qualified, you know, that you're not getting treated fairly, make the argument of, oh, how come you're different than any other county?
Well, except Jerry thinks we're going to be bankrupt in twenty-seven.
I'm not necessarily saying that.
I know it. I'm just, I'm not twenty-seven. I'm just saying we're pushing ourselves into a little bit of a problem.
And that's projections based on if we make no change.
I thought you guys were working on a deal where we could issue treasury debt.
You get your customers to buy it in the nation.
Get your buy-in for, get your buy-in from your elected officials.
And not hire it this year.
To help.
Yeah, well, just to nip this in the bud, I, I'll go out on a limb here. I'll support the fifteenth. If that's, you know, I don't know where.
I don't know where Scott is.
Where, I mean, would you support it?
Well, yeah, Judy, we were on a, Judy is going to, we already discussed that.
Are you guys, you guys supported?
The two outliers, where we were wondering about you and wondering about Scott.
No, I'll support it. We got the four votes. Yeah, so, so you'll have it prepared and then it's just, just educational. Some of these ordinances, so you bring in on the fifteenth, you have the first reading, we vote.
It's got to be unanimous.
We have to vote unanimously.
You support it?
Oh, we do.
Otherwise it's too self.
Because if we ditched this program to make everybody fair. That's how that works?
Yep. It really does, the best we can do. This is so confusing. But I was at the meeting to do this.
If we pass it on first reading and we could pass it as amended on second reading. Because there are going to be some amendments.
So we could pass it on the first reading now?
Uh, you, you technically can.
Why don't we do that?
I mean.
Yes.
Because Scott and Judy have had those.
So then you'd have to have four people go against it on the fifteenth.
Correct.
So if we can pass it, why don't we just do it now so it stops the grief?
We're missing two, we're missing two council members.
Yeah, but they were at a meeting with them, they were part of the committee.
Yeah, we can take care of it on the fifteenth.
All right.
I think totally, you got to be unanimous. If you're saying they were not, I mean.
If we don't, I mean, we could, two days later have a special session.
Yeah, but okay.
So what we have.
Yeah, so, I mean, the way it sits now, we're going to pass. The issue is, is why not lay the groundwork now to get it passed on the fifteenth rather than, okay, we didn't get the unanimous on the fifteenth, we got to now meet before the first or whatever. It's going to pass.
Because of optics, I guess.
What's optics?
Well, we, we have to, I don't.
Well, just like you just said, there's enough of you sitting here right now to where if you needed to do a second reading, you could do a second reading.
Damn. Let's vote.
Make a motion.
I would rather get it amended, have it good and ready to go on the fifteenth. Do a vote on the fifteenth. Right now, we're looking like we've got the unanimous, unanimous vote to do the second reading on the fifteenth. If we don't have a unanimous vote on the fifteenth, we have to do a second reading. We could set up a special session two days later, come in here and make the second vote.
That's what I'm just saying, but why?
Do it.
You know where it's going to go.
Transparent.
Do it, Jim, do it.
Well, you may not know. Ethically, I think we should.
What'd you say?
I said, that solution is a valid solution.
Exactly.
I agree it is, I agree it is. I don't, I'm not.
Ethically, I would like to do, I would like to do it more transparent and simpler. Where there's no question.
All right.
Nope.
Ken.
Yes.
I love you to death, I really do. I really understand where you're coming from, brother. I really do. I appreciate it. You got all the empathy in the world. But I'm like, we've talked about this, right? I think we've thoroughly vetted it. So therefore I'd like to make a motion.
To go home?
A motion that we pass this proposed ordinance.
We already, we already, we already established.
I second.
Correct?
I second.
So basically what you're saying is do a first reading right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I second.
That's what he's saying. Which still needs to be amended.
Yeah, well, yeah, right. We, we can put that in a motion.
I don't like it.
I know you don't, but that's, I'm going to make a motion and then.
I second, Gary.
And I got second there.
So you're making a motion to, to eat, to just actually.
You got to read the ordinance.
Pass. You got to read the ordinance.
I know.
And I don't know the ordinance. Do I need to redo my motion? Because I've never made a motion before.
And the ordinance number?
Uh, twenty twenty-five.
Well, it says twenty twenty-six here.
But.
Yeah, but that's for twenty twenty-six, your ordinance number, numbering for this year.
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five. And since we're doing the first reading today, it will be today. Be twelve dash twelve, dash oh four, uh, zero zero one. We already have zero zero zero.
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash twelve dash zero four dash zero zero one. Now therefore be it ord, Brown County, it's Brown County Salary Ordinance twenty twenty-six. Now therefore be it ordained that the Brown County Council hereby adopts the job classification for all classified positions in the county employment and fixes the compensation of all officers, deputies, and other employees of Brown County, Indiana as per applicable step increases for the calendar year twenty twenty-six. Regular full-time county employees are considered to be subject to the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act. Unless otherwise, these measures here and is excluded or exempt, the county council is deemed inappropriate to award additional compensation to certain employees and elected officials, longevity bonus in the courts of the resolution number. Anything yet to be determined?
I have to find that resolution.
Can we do that? I have to button up better. I thought you said we needed to button up our breasts. Never mind.
I'll continue reading until we get the resolution number amending and clarifying what employee longevity bonus adopted on December nineteenth, twenty sixteen. And amended this resolution number fifty, twenty twenty-one, dash eleven, dash fifteen, dash zero zero two on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. That's where we need to be. Employees, you got the resolution number or no?
No, so far nobody's been able to send it to me.
All right. Employees receiving longevity pay will be paid a hundred dollars for each year of completed service to Brown County. As of January one of each calendar year, the employees that are eligible are full-time and permanent part-ten employees and full-time elected officials except council, commissioners, the sheriff, the matron, and merit officers. The pay grade annual salary is calculated on twenty eighty normal hour year. Part-time hourly rate is not to exceed sixteen dollars per hour at the discretion of the elected official or department head as set out by approval of the Brown County Council in June twenty twenty-two. Emergency call pay shall be awarded, awarded and administered as set out in Exhibit A attached here, too. All new employees may be hired ninety percent of salary from a position held for the first ninety days of employment at the discretion of the department head or elected official. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon strict compliance with and adherence to salary administration benefit fiscally related to state and federal mandated departments of the Brown County Personnel Policy Handbook. Here's the intent of the county council that its language will encourage compliance with personnel policy, which may have a fiscal impact on county government. The county auditor is responsible for auditing all claims against the county to ensure that they are in proper form, are duly authenticated as required by law, are in accordance with contract or statutory authority, and are correct. County auditors shall not issue warrants of compensation that are not supported by the terms and conditions specified in the salary ordinance. Positions labeled as excluded slash elected, excluded slash chief deputy slash excluded are exempt, are not entitled to, and shall not receive overtime compensation or compensatory time off. Refer to Exhibit B for a full list of positions that are excluded or exempt. Overtime pay shall be paid as detailed in the Brown County Personnel Policy Handbook. Holiday pay shall be paid as detailed in the Brown County Personnel Policy Handbook. Compensation is established for the job classifications identified by the Brown County Council. Any existing employee that transfers into any of these job classifications shall receive the compensation identified below. Any newly hired employee filling any of these job classifications shall receive the compensation identified below. The salaries identified are internal midpoint salaries if the current employee serving in certain job classifications receives more than the internal midpoint is the intent of the Brown County Council to maintain their pay at that level until all positions that classification meet that pay. Any difference in pay between employees in the same job classification is a result of different job duties being performed. Is that it?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to go through and read line by line everybody's, right? All of those things. Again, that next section is here's our internal midpoint, right? But yet we do go in in detail in every office or every position, whether they're at that internal midpoint or whether they're above that. And that's the difference in job duties then between employees until we get everybody up to that level.
So we have read it. We have made the motion. We know what, take a vote.
Patrick was the, your second choice?
Yes, I second.
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Darren?
No. What's that, what are you voting on here?
That's okay.
That's fine. So I appreciate it.
That's four to three.
Well, this, but now this means on the fifteenth, we don't have to have a unanimous vote.
Yeah, we're going to pass it on the fifteenth.
Yeah, all right.
Which I'm not, I'm not, I like what you've done, I like, I didn't, I didn't want to do the vote today. I didn't want to push the vote.
No, that's fine.
That's all right.
I think they only did it if it was the fifteenth. But we still, we had a, we didn't.
All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Can we go?
I hope so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Patrick's like, he has to get me out of here.
Aye.
Okay. What's that got to do with it?
Well played, Jim, well played.